Good morning, I'm Constable Tom Fitzpatrick, Chairman of Norfolk County Council. Good morning, I'm Constable Tom Fitzpatrick, Chairman of Norfolk County Council. I'd like Good morning, I'm Constable Tom Fitzpatrick, Chairman of Norfolk County Council. I'd like I'd like to welcome everyone to this council meeting and quickly go over some general housekeeping. to welcome everyone to this council meeting and quickly go over some general housekeeping. to welcome everyone to this council meeting and quickly go over some general housekeeping. This meeting's been held in person at County Hall and has also been streamed live on the This meeting's been held in person at County Hall and has also been streamed live on the This meeting's been held in person at County Hall and has also been streamed live on the County Council's YouTube channel and the recording will be available to view afterwards. County Council's YouTube channel and the recording will be available to view afterwards. County Council's YouTube channel and the recording will be available to view afterwards. A fire alarm is not expected during the meeting, so if the fire alarm does sound we must evacuate A fire alarm is not expected during the meeting, so if the fire alarm does sound, we must evacuate A fire alarm is not expected during the meeting, so if the fire alarm does sound, we must evacuate County Hall. In the event of an emergency, please make your way to the nearest exit and County Hall. In the event of an emergency, please make your way to the nearest exit and County Hall. In the event of an emergency, please make your way to the nearest exit and meet at the muster point which is located in the main car park. For members, microphones, meet at the muster point which is located in the main car park. For members, microphones, meet at the muster point which is located in the main car park. For members, microphones, when using your microphone, please make sure it's switched on and speak towards it. This when using your microphone, please make sure it's switched on and speak towards it. This when using your microphone, please make sure it's switched on and speak towards it. This will tell the cameras to focus on you and ensure you can be heard during the live stream. will tell the cameras to focus on you and ensure you can be heard during the live stream. will tell the cameras to focus on you and ensure you can be heard during the live stream. When you've finished speaking, please push the button to turn off your microphone as When you've finished speaking, please push the button to turn off your microphone as When you've finished speaking, please push the button to turn off your microphone as it will allow the system to pick up the next speaker. If anyone does need to leave the it will allow the system to pick up the next speaker. If anyone does need to leave the it will allow the system to pick up the next speaker. If anyone does need to leave the meeting early, could you please also remove your card and leave it on your desk so that meeting early, could you please also remove your card and leave it on your desk so that meeting early, could you please also remove your card and leave it on your desk so that the AV system can see that you're no longer in the meeting. So it'd be very helpful for the AV system can see that you're no longer in the meeting. So it'd be very helpful for the AV system can see that you're no longer in the meeting. So it'd be very helpful for councillors if you could indicate clearly if you wish to speak by raising your hand councillors if you could indicate clearly if you wish to speak by raising your hand councillors if you could indicate clearly if you wish to speak by raising your hand high and please switch off your microphone when you've finished speaking. Could I ask high and please switch off your microphone when you've finished speaking. Could I ask high and please switch off your microphone when you've finished speaking. Could I ask everyone in the chamber to ensure their laptops, mobile phones and tablets are switched to everyone in the chamber to ensure their laptops, mobile phones and tablets are switched to everyone in the chamber to ensure their laptops, mobile phones and tablets are switched to silent while the meeting's in progress and please also don't leave them vibrating because silent while the meeting's in progress and please also don't leave them vibrating because silent while the meeting's in progress and please also don't leave them vibrating because that's also picked up. Before we start the meeting, could I remember, welcome members that's also picked up. Before we start the meeting, could I remember, welcome members that's also picked up. Before we start the meeting, could I remember, welcome members of the public but also remind them this is a meeting held in public but it is not a of the public but also remind them this is a meeting held in public but it is not a of the public but also remind them this is a meeting held in public but it is not a public meeting with the attending audience as they have a chance to participate. So public meeting with the attending audience as they have a chance to participate. So public meeting with the attending audience as they have a chance to participate. So you're welcome this morning but you've come along to listen to the discussion carried you're welcome this morning but you've come along to listen to the discussion carried you're welcome this morning but you've come along to listen to the discussion carried out by democratically elected councillors and I should warn you that if there is any disruption out by democratically elected councillors and I should warn you that if there is any disruption out by democratically elected councillors and I should warn you that if there is any disruption to the meeting, those in the public gallery would be asked to leave and be accompanied to the meeting, those in the public gallery would be asked to leave and be accompanied to the meeting, those in the public gallery would be asked to leave and be accompanied from the building. So the next point is to confirm the broadcast is live. Alex, he's from the building. So the next point is to confirm the broadcast is live. Alex, he's from the building. So the next point is to confirm the broadcast is live. Alex, he's there, he's given me the thumbs up from the back of the room. So, go on. So for those there, he's given me the thumbs up from the back of the room. So, go on. So for those there, he's given me the thumbs up from the back of the room. So, go on. So for those who've just joined us, I'm Constable Tom Fitzpatrick, Chairman of Norfolk County Council. So welcome who've just joined us, I'm Constable Tom Fitzpatrick, Chairman of Norfolk County Council. So welcome who've just joined us, I'm Constable Tom Fitzpatrick, Chairman of Norfolk County Council. So welcome to this meeting of Norfolk County Council being held today, Thursday the 25th of September to this meeting of Norfolk County Council being held today, Thursday the 25th of September to this meeting of Norfolk County Council being held today, Thursday the 25th of September 2025. And we start our meeting, as always, with prayers. I'd like to welcome our chaplain 2025. And we start our meeting, as always, with prayers. I'd like to welcome our chaplain 2025. And we start our meeting, as always, with prayers. I'd like to welcome our chaplain for today, Reverend Albert Catmore, to our meeting and ask him to begin today's proceedings for today, Reverend Albert Catmore, to our meeting and ask him to begin today's proceedings for today, Reverend Albert Catmore, to our meeting and ask him to begin today's proceedings by calling upon him for prayers. Thank you, Albert. by calling upon him for prayers. Thank you, Albert. by calling upon him for prayers. Thank you, Albert.
Thank you. So let's pray. Almighty God, we come to you today asking for your guidance Thank you. So let's pray. Almighty God, we come to you today asking for your guidance Thank you. So let's pray. Almighty God, we come to you today asking for your guidance and inspiration as we gather for this council meeting. Let us hold in mind how, in recent and inspiration as we gather for this council meeting. Let us hold in mind how, in recent and inspiration as we gather for this council meeting. Let us hold in mind how, in recent days, the principles of freedom of speech and democracy have been called into question days, the principles of freedom of speech and democracy have been called into question days, the principles of freedom of speech and democracy have been called into question with occurrences near and far. May those principles of freedom of speech and democracy ever remain with occurrences near and far. May those principles of freedom of speech and democracy ever remain with occurrences near and far. May those principles of freedom of speech and democracy ever remain sacrosanct and guide us and those in authority wherever they may be. Today, help us to engage sacrosanct and guide us and those in authority wherever they may be. Today, help us to engage sacrosanct and guide us and those in authority wherever they may be. Today, help us to engage in meaningful discussion, guide us in the ways of truth, tolerance, wisdom and integrity in meaningful discussion, guide us in the ways of truth, tolerance, wisdom and integrity in meaningful discussion, guide us in the ways of truth, tolerance, wisdom and integrity and keep us ever mindful of the needs of the people and communities that we seek to and keep us ever mindful of the needs of the people and communities that we seek to and keep us ever mindful of the needs of the people and communities that we seek to serve. We pray in your name. Amen. serve. We pray in your name. Amen. serve. We pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Agenda item one, apologies for absence. So if we can now move to those Thank you. Agenda item one, apologies for absence. So if we can now move to those Thank you. Agenda item one, apologies for absence. So if we can now move to those who've given their apologies for this meeting, so I'll ask Laine Tisdale, who's the committee who've given their apologies for this meeting, so I'll ask Laine Tisdale, who's the committee who've given their apologies for this meeting, so I'll ask Laine Tisdale, who's the committee officer, to read out the list of apologies. Thank you. officer, to read out the list of apologies. Thank you. officer, to read out the list of apologies. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. We have apologies today from Councillor Jim Moriarty, Councillor Thank you Chair. We have apologies today from Councillor Jim Moriarty, Councillor Thank you Chair. We have apologies today from Councillor Jim Moriarty, Councillor Lana Hempstead, Councillor Rob Colwell, Councillor Rodri Oliver, Councillor Judy Oliver, Lana Hempstead, Councillor Rob Colwell, Councillor Rodri Oliver, Councillor Judy Oliver, Councillor Lana Hempstead, Councillor Rob Colwell, Councillor Rodri Oliver, Councillor Judy Oliver, Councillor Councillor John Fisher, Councillor Carl Anderson, Councillor Ed Connolly, Councillor Graham Carpenter, John Fisher, Councillor Carl Anderson, Councillor Ed Connolly, Councillor Graham Carpenter, John Fisher, Councillor Carl Anderson, Councillor Ed Connolly, Councillor Graham Carpenter, Councillor Richard Price, Councillor Catherine Rowett, Councillor Carl Smith, Councillor Tony Councillor Richard Price, Councillor Catherine Rowett, Councillor Carl Smith, Councillor Tony Councillor Richard Price, Councillor Catherine Rowett, Councillor Carl Smith, Councillor Tony White, Councillor Claire Bowes, Councillor Emma Corlett, Councillor Tony Adams, Councillor White, Councillor Claire Bowes, Councillor Emma Corlett, Councillor Tony Adams, Councillor White, Councillor Claire Bowes, Councillor Emma Corlett, Councillor Tony Adams, Councillor Stephen Askew, Councillor Stuart Clancy and Councillor Stefan Akerone. Thank you. Stephen Askew, Councillor Stuart Clancy and Councillor Stefan Akerone. Thank you. Stephen Askew, Councillor Stuart Clancy and Councillor Stefan Akerone. Thank you.
Thank you. So, can you add councillor Dawson to that list as well, please? Thank you. So, can you add councillor Dawson to that list as well, please? Thank you. So, can you add councillor Dawson to that list as well, please? Right, that's duly done. Thank you very much for that. So could I remind members Right, that's duly done. Thank you very much for that. So could I remind members Right, that's duly done. Thank you very much for that. So could I remind members that meetings of the council will not extend beyond three hours unless this time is extended that meetings of the council will not extend beyond three hours unless this time is extended that meetings of the council will not extend beyond three hours unless this time is extended in accordance with Rule 11.1 subsection N of the Council Procedure Rules. However, it in accordance with Rule 11.1 subsection N of the Council Procedure Rules. However, it in accordance with Rule 11.1 subsection N of the Council Procedure Rules. However, it is my intention to enact Rule 4.5 and Rule 4.6 of the Constitution, once the meeting is my intention to enact Rule 4.5 and Rule 4.6 of the Constitution, once the meeting is my intention to enact Rule 4.5 and Rule 4.6 of the Constitution, once the meeting period has elapsed, if any business remains, the practical application of this will be period has elapsed, if any business remains, the practical application of this will be period has elapsed, if any business remains, the practical application of this will be that the meeting would then continue on a vote-only basis. I also intend to adjourn that the meeting would then continue on a vote-only basis. I also intend to adjourn that the meeting would then continue on a vote-only basis. I also intend to adjourn the meeting after approximately two hours, an appropriate point, for a 30-minute break. the meeting after approximately two hours, an appropriate point, for a 30-minute break. the meeting after approximately two hours, an appropriate point, for a 30-minute break. So we now move on to agenda item two, the minutes from the County Council meeting held So we now move on to agenda item two, the minutes from the County Council meeting held So we now move on to agenda item two, the minutes from the County Council meeting held on Tuesday 22nd of July 2025. Please note this is for matters of accuracy only and on Tuesday 22nd of July 2025. Please note this is for matters of accuracy only and on Tuesday 22nd of July 2025. Please note this is for matters of accuracy only and those can be found starting in page five. I don't intend to go through them page by those can be found starting in page five. I don't intend to go through them page by those can be found starting in page five. I don't intend to go through them page by page but if anyone has any changes or concerns, could you please raise your hand and explain page but if anyone has any changes or concerns, could you please raise their hand and explain page but if anyone has any changes or concerns, could you please raise your hand and explain where those are? Otherwise, are we content to accept those as inaccurate record of that where those are? Otherwise, are we content to accept those as inaccurate record of that where those are? Otherwise, are we content to accept those as inaccurate record of that meeting? Yeah, right. Duly agreed, thank you. Now move on to agenda item three, announcements meeting? Yeah, right. Duly agreed, thank you. Now move on to agenda item three, announcements meeting? Yeah, right. Duly agreed, thank you. Now move on to agenda item three, announcements from the chairman, leader, chief executive. I'll take the chairman's opportunity to go from the chairman, leader, chief executive. I'll take the chairman's opportunity to go from the chairman, leader, chief executive. I'll take the chairman's opportunity to go first. I think we're very sad to hear of the passing of the Duchess of Kent earlier first. I think we're very sad to hear of the passing of the Duchess of Kent earlier first. I think we're very sad to hear of the passing of the Duchess of Kent earlier this month. A letter of condolence was sent and the flags at County Hall were flown at this month. A letter of condolence was sent and the flags at County Hall were flown at this month. A letter of condolence was sent and the flags at County Hall were flown at Hathmas as a mark of respect. It's also my sad duty to announce the passing of one of Hathmas as a mark of respect. It's also my sad duty to announce the passing of one of Hathmas as a mark of respect. It's also my sad duty to announce the passing of one of our former members, Councillor John Baskerville, who represented Guildcross Division between our former members, Councillor John Baskerville, who represented Guildcross Division between our former members, Councillor John Baskerville, who represented Guildcross Division between 1993 and 2009 and was also a former chairman of Norfolk County Council in 2005 to 2006. 1993 and 2009 and was also a former chairman of Norfolk County Council in 2005 to 2006. 1993 and 2009 and was also a former chairman of Norfolk County Council in 2005 to 2006. Councillor Baskerville also served as cabinet member for performance monitoring in the Councillor Baskerville also served as cabinet member for performance monitoring in the Councillor Baskerville also served as cabinet member for performance monitoring in the early 2000s. This summer and autumn marks the 85th anniversary of the Battle of Britain early 2000s. This summer and autumn marks the 85th anniversary of the Battle of Britain early 2000s. This summer and autumn marks the 85th anniversary of the Battle of Britain and a ceremony took place at County Hall on Friday the 12th of September to commemorate and a ceremony took place at County Hall on Friday the 12th of September to commemorate and a ceremony took place at County Hall on Friday the 12th of September to commemorate everyone who fought and defended our country's freedom during World War Two. And it's my everyone who fought and defended our country's freedom during World War Two. And it's my everyone who fought and defended our country's freedom during World War Two. And it's my sad and solemn duty to report that Ronald Butcher, who was a veteran of D-Day, who sad and solemn duty to report that Ronald Butcher, who was a veteran of D-Day, who sad and solemn duty to report that Ronald Butcher, who was a veteran of D-Day, who was in attendance at County Hall that day, passed away shortly after the ceremony. So was in attendance at County Hall that day, passed away shortly after the ceremony. So was in attendance at County Hall that day, passed away shortly after the ceremony. So I'd ask council to stand for a minute's silence to mark the memory of those three people. I'd ask council to stand for a minute's silence to mark the memory of those three people. I'd ask council to stand for a minute's silence to mark the memory of those three people. Thank you. So August marked the 80th anniversary of VJ Day, the end of World War Two, and commemoration services were held across Norfolk to mark the occasion. North Walsham Good Neighbour Scheme is a volunteer-led project which offers short-term practical help and support to people in North Walsham and it recently celebrated its 10th year of operation. And earlier this month, I was very proud to represent Norfolk County Council at the special event marking this milestone. And such a scheme is a strong reminder of what's my theme for the year, knowing your neighbour, and it's something we'd all like to see rolled out across other localities across Norfolk. I'd also like to highlight some recent achievements by hard-working people such as the Flourish Awards, celebrating people, projects, teams and organisations made outstanding contributions to help children and young people in Norfolk flourish. And I was very pleased to attend last night. The Norfolk Fire and Rescue Awards coming up to celebrating those who go above and beyond to keep Norfolk safe. And the Oscars celebrating the achievements of the workforce who make Norfolk County Council very much what it is today. So thank you to all those people. And that's me finished for... So nothing from the leader? Anything from the chief executive? Nothing from the chief executive. Thank you. Move to agenda item four, members to declare any interest to any members of interest to which declare. Constable Chinnery.
As a trustee of NORAH, the Norfolk Record Office charity.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, yeah.
I'm a twin hatter and I'm just wondering whether or not we have advice from the monitoring officer.
The monitoring officer has previously ruled that it is not necessary for twin hatters to declare at every meeting but do you wish to say anything further than that?
A dispensation has been granted for twin hatters in respect of this meeting. Thank you.
Constable Ward.
Thank you Chairman. I'm director and chairman of Norfolk Museum's Development Foundation.
Right, thank you for that, duly noted. Anyone else? That's us. Thank you very much. Agenda item five, petitions presented to council and no petitions have been presented to council for this meeting. Agenda item six would be business, if any, remaining from the last council meeting and I understand there is no outstanding business from the last meeting. And agenda item seven, questions to the leader. Details of how that runs can be found page 32 and we have 15 minutes for questions to the leader. And I'll start the first round of questions by selecting the first questioner from the Liberal Democrat Group. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. QEH is ranked worst performing trust nationally. Isn't just unfortunate, it's a predictable outcome of systemic failures that demand strong local advocacy and challenge. As leader, what specific interventions have you made with Norfolk and Waverney ICB to address these performance failures? Can you point to any measurable improvement in Norfolk's health outcomes that directly result from your advocacy and challenge of health partners? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. We work very closely with our health colleagues across the county and I have had meetings with the new chief executive, Lesley Dwyer, about the situation that exists. And as we know, all three hospitals are now being put together so that they actually work in unison and they are very aware that major improvements need to be made. We're all aware of the challenges that the QEH have had. We've been trying to get improvements and a new hospital built there for many years and I hope that finally we will actually see some progress on that matter. But you're right, health outcomes in Norfolk is something that we need to address jointly and we will continue to work with our partners to do so.
Thank you. A question from the Labour Group. Yeah, Constable Smith, Claire.
Thank you Chair. Local partnerships, local government-owned company review guidance tells us to make sure wholly-owned companies are still appropriate and performing the purpose as originally intended. There is nothing in the business plan for a single unitary that tells us what the purpose of importantly wholly-owned companies like Norse have in the future shape of a new council. As Norse has a turnover of hundreds of millions of pounds, is currently losing money and is a consequential risk to any new council, will the leader explain that omission and what she thinks the role of Norse would be in a new single unitary council for Norfolk? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. All of the wholly-owned companies which are owned by all of the districts and the county will be something that will have to be reviewed when we know what the outcome of the local government reorganisation plan is. We don't know how many unitaries we're going to get. So that is something that's got to be addressed. And actually, we've already started work on how the implementation of any reorganisation would be. But what happens to those companies in the future will be a matter for the new unitary. It's not something that we can predetermine. So that's something we've got to work on and we've got a couple of years to do that in. So that work will happen.
Thank you. That brings us to the Green Group. Constable Neil.
Thank you Chair. Flags are regularly flown from the top of County Hall, the Union flag, the English flag, the Norfolk flag and several times such flags as the Ukrainian flag. As the UK government has recently declared that it recognises the recreation of a Palestinian state and has already recognised a full Palestinian ambassador in the UK, would the council fly the Palestinian flag to show solidarity with us supporting the recreation of Palestinian state? I feel it would be most appropriate, especially as the patron saint of England, St George, was half-Palestinian as his mother, Saint Polychronia, came from Palestine.
No, we won't be flying that flag from this building.
Thank you. That takes us to the Independent Group.
Thank you Chair. In my experience, the parents of disabled children are among the most dedicated, tenacious and hard-working of all parents. Are you aware of any instances where parents of children with S E N D have exploited the county's school transport system because they can't be bothered to get out of bed, as Richard Tice, MP, has suggested?
Well, I'm certainly not going to try and answer for Richard Tice and his views. I'm not aware of any incidences of that and of course our staff will be helping parents who have children with S E N D to make the right choices for how they get their children to school and we will assist them in that as we have to under our statutory duties in the law.
Thank you. Next takes it on to the Independent Progressive Group.
Thank you Chair. I wanted to acknowledge and thank Children's Services for the recent guidance including around safeguarding that was issued to schools and other professionals working with children affected by recent local and national protests. Does the leader agree that abuse, harassment, bullying and hate speech have no place in our community or our county? Thank you.
Well, of course I'm going to agree with that. It has no place.
Thank you. Next is Reform UK. Who should speak?
Thank you Chairman. I first of all just wanted to extend our commiserations to the leader of the council on her unsuccessful bid to become the Conservative candidate for the yet-to-be-established position of mayor in Norfolk and Suffolk. I can tell you that in Reform, we found that a disappointing outcome. But following last night's yet-again emphatic electoral victory in Thetford in Castle Ward for Reform, does she recognise that 81 councillors out of the 84 here have no mandate?
The councillors in this council do have a mandate. The law was changed to extend the term which makes every single councillor sitting in this chamber a legitimate councillor. I can't comment on the election result last night. I suspect there is still some disquiet in the country where people are perhaps protest-voting. But what we want to see from Reform is proper policies and a proper manifesto. And I think at the moment, they seem to be just a single-issue party. So we're looking forward to seeing a bit more depth and, you know, some more meat on the bone when it comes to what Reform are actually offering this country and this county. Tim Parsmore will make an excellent mayoral candidate and I will be fully supporting him as the Conservative candidate for Norfolk and Suffolk.
Thank you. Next question's from the Conservative Group. Constable Ward.
Thank you Chairman. There have been a lot of reports recently around flag installations and safety. Given the strong feelings in the community, how is the council responding to this? Please.
Thank you. Flags have become a very big issue and a very divisive issue. For me personally, flying national flags symbolises my pride in my country and I won't allow anyone to tell me that I cannot fly my flags. Flying a flag should be a patriotic gesture and not a political one and we shouldn't allow our flags and our national pride to be hijacked. Other countries proudly fly their national flags and we should not be any different. Our flags are flags that cover us all, whether you were born here or whether you've come here to live. And what this council's not going to do is get involved in any flag wars which also potentially put our staff at risk. So we've had many emails in on both sides of the argument about flags and we appreciate that communities may have become concerned. We don't condone the use of threatening or insightful behaviour however it is presented and any reports of that will always be taken extremely seriously. And we would also expect that to be properly investigated by the relevant authorities. There is a Highways Act, section 132, which gives us the option to remove anything that's hung on to our street furniture. But it has to be done on a case-by-case basis and we would take proper legal advice and we would also talk to our partners to decide whether a successful conviction is possible or what should be done about that particular incident. So our approach hasn't changed to this. What we're actually doing is looking at our highways assets. We don't condone anyone who attaches anything without authorisation and we do removals under our powers under the Highways Act. We're not going to send our staff out and put them in potential conflict. So how items are removed is entirely down to several factors. It's going to include cost, resource and availability. We can't prioritise flag removal over safety and we have many works we have to undertake on the public highway. So as we go around doing our normal maintenance work, if there is something affixed to any of our street furniture, then it will be removed in the normal way. And that's the way we're going to deal with this matter. We'll continue to monitor the situation and we'll continue to talk to the police about it. We have to recognise our public sector equality duties and we will act fairly, reasonably and in accordance with the law. So if an item is a safety concern and our partners agree it should be removed as a priority, then of course we will do that and work for that to be done as swiftly as possible. We need to have common sense in this and not allow... We need to have common sense in this and not allow ourselves to be dragged into a divisive issue which is causing division in our county. We here as the county council are here to bring our county and our residents together, and we'll continue to do that with this particular matter as well.
Thank you. That's the end of the first round of questions. We come to the second round of questions and ask question from the Democrat Group. Councillor Penfold has indicated.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and good morning. Many months ago, group leaders and indeed deputy group leaders had a very successful meeting with the Norfolk Youth Parliament. It's very positive. It's all gone a bit quiet since then, so I just wondered if the leader could give us an update, please, on how her work with the Norfolk Youth Parliament is progressing. Thank you.
Well, I was very fortunate to meet one of the members last night, actually, at the Flourish Awards. He was actually the star of the show. He was very amusing, and he did tell me on many occasions that he was a member of the youth parliament and how proud he was to be a member of that. And we talked about bringing them back into the chamber and maybe having some of their meetings here. And I also understand that they've been invited to Westminster, so they've already been down and met with some of our MPs. So it may have seemed to have gone quiet, but I promise you, there's lots going on in the background, and we will continue to support them because they are the future politicians, and we hope to see them sitting in this chamber and maybe in the House of Commons in the years to come.
Thank you. Brings us to the Labour Group. Any questions? No questions. Then that takes us to the Green Group. No questions. Takes us to the Independent Group. No questions. The Independent Progressive Group.
Thank you, Chair. At the last meeting, when we were discussing devolution, there were lots of twin-hatters within the Conservative Group who weren't here, and the leader explained that it was probably because it was harvest season. I just wondered if there was a particular season at the moment that the explanation is for them not being here today. Thanks.
That's not a very nice question, is it, councillor? If you want me to go through the list of the issues for all of our absences, then we can maybe talk about that outside, but I'm not sure that's appropriate. But we have, you know, have some who are not very well, some who are away.
Thirty-three percent of our group isn't there.
And I noticed that a third of your group isn't here either, so there we are.
Right, thank you. Takes us to Reform UK. No questions. Conservative Group. Councillor Willby.
Thank you, Chairman. Leader, with the ongoing talks about a mayor for Norfolk and Suffolk, do you think this is an opportunity to ask central government to include powers and funding relating to water management, flooding, drought and coastal erosion protection as part of this new strategic role?
Yes, I mean, we are all... It is a really serious issue. It might not necessarily be such a serious issue for the mayor of Manchester, for example, or the mayor of London, but it's going to be a very serious issue for the mayor of Norfolk and Suffolk. And we are told that after we have had a mayor for 18 months and we have got a tick in the box that, yes, we are managing our two counties in the right way from a strategic point of view, that there will be other options available for our mayor to take on. And I did speak to the previous minister, and I will speak to the new minister, Miata Fanbola, when I get the chance, to talk about what those powers might be. And I'd like to see us be able to bring together the Environment Agency, the IDBs, Anglian Water, the Broadside Authority, all the different agencies who are responsible for water management in our county, and actually have some power to be able to direct them to do certain things. I think it would be, from a strategic point of view, the right thing to do. It means we can take a bit more control over our coastal erosion, which seems to be swept under the carpet. It means that we can make sure that when we have flooding, that the matters are dealt with so that we don't get flooding in the future. And also, farmers have a problem with irrigation. There are droughts in certain parts of our county, and yet we pump fresh water out to sea when we have too much of it. That can't continue. We need to be able to manage our water in a proper, sustainable, environmentally friendly and practical way. So it's definitely something for the future, and it's something that I will be urging our mayor, when elected, to ask the government to hand over to us for Norfolk and Suffolk.
Thank you very much. We're now out of time for that item, so it takes on agenda item eight, which is recommendations from the Cabinet meeting held on Monday, the 1st of September 2025. You can find page 34. I invite the leader to move the recommendation in the Cabinet report.
Thank you, Chairman. I say move.
Thank you. Do you have a seconder for that? Councillor Jamieson? Anything? So could we vote on that? All those in favour? Against? Right, that recommendation is carried. Thank you very much. Agenda item nine is local government reorganisation. Begins in page 35, the Agenda Pacts and supplementary agenda, page A2. Just to remind members, we've had some discussion about this in view of the importance of this item, and so I've agreed that group leaders will be given up to 10 minutes to speak on these items. We'll go round as normal, and then the debate will be opened up to the rest of the chamber. Okay, so that's it. So with that in mind, I call upon the leader to move the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. We're here today to consider a decision that will shape Norfolk's future for generations. The question is simple: how do we best serve the people of Norfolk? The government has asked councils to submit proposals for fewer, stronger unitary authorities, and Norfolk County Council has made its position clear that we are here to consider the business case that supports that vision, and that vision is that one single council for Norfolk is the best option. Residents have told us what they want. They want value for money and the best services for all our communities. Our comprehensive options appraisal is clear: only one unitary council fully meets the government's criteria, generates the most savings, avoids unnecessary risks and delivers best outcomes for our people. This is not just about structure, it's about how we deliver better services, empower local decision-making and make taxpayers' money go further. Putting in new artificial boundaries just increases costs and causes confusion. Our current system of eight councils is complicated. It builds in duplication, multiple back-office systems, multiple sets of councillors, multiple strategies that sometimes overlap and sometimes compete. This costs money, money that could be better spent on frontline services. And no one is suggesting that this change will be easy. But with Norfolk County Council already delivering 85% of all local government services across the county, moving to a single county unitary will be a whole lot simpler than trying to gerrymander a system where dis and wells are locked together and Hunstanton and Attleborough are uncomfortable bedfellows, and of course Norwich carved out, leaving the more rural areas to fend for themselves. That isn't fair on the majority of Norfolk residents. By moving to a single unitary authority, we can unlock efficiencies and free up resources to reinvest in services and communities at a time when every pound matters. Norfolk deserves a system that delivers maximum value for the council tax that people pay. So a single council for Norfolk would save £39.8 million every year. The more councils you have, the more it costs taxpayers, and council tax will have to be harmonised. Only by having one council can we deliver enough savings to give future councillors real choices on council tax levels. More than one council simply takes those choices away. If we don't want to pay more tax, we have to make the most savings. And Norfolk is a diverse place. We must recognise that services need to be tailored to reflect the needs of local residents. But having one council doesn't mean less local, it means smarter local. We already deliver services directly into people's homes, and that won't change, but we can improve on this by having a stronger local delivery model for all our services with neighbourhood area committees, partnerships with town and parish councils and integrated local service teams. This will put decision-making closer to people, ensuring that local priorities are heard and acted upon. Whether you live in Norwich, a major, or a market town, or a rural village, you will get the same access to high-quality services. No more postcode lottery, a council that is strategic at the top and rooted in local communities at the base. Some services must stay whole to work well and should be co-terminous with our partners, like the police and the health authorities, and that will make them more effective. Splitting vital services across two or three new councils would put vulnerable people at risk, cause unnecessary duplication and cause confusion. One unitary: strong where it counts, local where it matters. A single council means Norfolk can speak with one voice, retaining our county identity. A single unitary authority would provide one clear voice and one clear point of accountability. One Norfolk, one council.
I understand the deputy leader of the council is going to second the proposal. Do you wish to either speak now or do you wish to sum up again? Right, duly reserved, thank you. Call upon the leader of the Liberal Democrat Group to speak to the motions being proposed by the leader of the council.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Before I get started, a touch of magnanimity. These last few months have been a tough, demanding process, and I'd like to put on record my acknowledgement of the work that senior officers have put into the preparation of this business case. To say it's been a challenge, I think, is putting it mildly. However, I'm afraid to say my views on this remain unchanged. Despite your valiant attempts at defending the single unitary case, the concerns expressed by the Lib Dem group and others have not been satisfied. It is deeply regrettable that so little progress appears to be made in coming together with districts to find common ground on a way forward for LGR. I had hoped back in July that good sense would still prevail and that efforts would intensify to get negotiations on a much better footing. That opportunity has now been lost, and we now find ourselves at the whim of central government to impose what it regards as the best option for Norfolk. The council's entrenched approach, its lack of engagement are at odds with the vast majority of views that have been expressed on this matter. There are many colleagues across the chamber, all parties and none, that value their work as district councillors, close to the people they represent, addressing their needs and concerns at local level and striving to make their communities a better place. And I feel strongly that the Conservative leadership underestimate this strong bond that exists. Local government faces its most radical overhaul in decades, but at least some Conservatives remain stuck in the past, devoid of new ideas and ill-equipped to deal with the challenges that lie ahead. These proposals are, in my view, a last desperate attempt to cling to the reins of power when most people have long since accepted the need to open a new chapter for local government in Norfolk. Leaving aside the understandable reservations about the sheer geographical size and scale of a unitary representing nearly a million people, let's look again at some of the rationale being put forward. The Conservatives claim in this business case that one Norfolk will lead to better value for money and deliver huge savings in the longer term. In my view, that is based on a false premise. Bigger is not always better, and at best, the evidence on this is distinctly mixed, and mega councils often risk higher costs and poorer outcomes due to both remoteness and inefficiency. It is therefore hard to give much credence to the idea that this will be an effective approach to delivering essential services tailored to local needs. The Conservatives talk about simpler, more efficient services, preserving benefits of scale and avoiding disruption. Now, no one pretends that disaggregation, the likes of adult social care and children's, will be an easy task. Far from it. But to claim that the council's suggested model is the only show in town is disingenuous and unfair. You know only too well that there are alternative models of delivery, and these have been trialled and implemented successfully elsewhere. Evidence has shown that they can be made to work, and the districts have given very careful consideration to the detail of that in their submissions. The business case also makes reference to fair and consistent services across the county. This clearly, and I believe wrongly, implies that this council knows best and that local councils can't be trusted to make the right decisions. There is no reason why new unitaries should not cooperate strategically whilst focusing on local needs, and there are several good examples of where this has taken place elsewhere. Feedback has shown that people much prefer the idea of decision-making to be community-based and delivered by politicians who are familiar with the needs of their area. To suggest otherwise is just plain wrong. Now, whilst I appreciate there's been some progress with thinking through how community engagement and accountability might work in practice, I believe that the new plans are a mishmash of ideas that sadly lack any real coherence. The idea of area committees has been tried before and not really been a great success. So what assurances can be given that it will be different this time? They need proper empowerment, or else they will just become mere talking shops. And then there's the resource question, which I know was covered at length at Strategic and Corporate Select Committee a few days ago. With the best will in the world, staffing up to 20 new area committees will have significant resource implications. And what will happen in those areas where parish councils or town councils either do not want the extra powers promised by the council or simply have not got the capacity to deliver them? The lack of a level playing field will surely mean that some parts of the county will be much better served than others, the postcode lottery. Meanwhile, Norwich is being treated, in my view, like a glorified parish council and deserves better than what is being proposed in this report. Whilst I genuinely believe in the need for a whole Norfolk solution here, your antipathy or apparent antipathy shown in this business case towards those in favour of self-rule for Norwich will win you no favours with government and is only likely to further damage your own case for a single unitary. It is thoroughly self-defeating. A strong Norwich will mean a stronger Norfolk. The city's role in attracting investment and fostering innovation, particularly in areas like health, life sciences, tech, clean energy, will enable Norfolk to address national and global challenges and help to achieve sustainable growth. Greater autonomy will undoubtedly galvanise Norwich to deal with its urban deprivation issues as well as tackling deep-seated inequalities such as child poverty. But as the main economic driver of the county, it will bring significant and lasting benefits for the rest of Norfolk, urban and rural. A single unitary will only dilute those ambitions. To conclude, Mr Chairman, I would like to end with a plea to Conservative colleagues on the opposition benches. I know that out of loyalty, many of you will be minded to support the single unitary concept, but you will do so with a very heavy heart. However... However, I think I'm right in saying there is no great enthusiasm for what is being put forward, and nagging doubts clearly remain. I recognise your dilemma, but would respectfully say it doesn't have to be that way. Colleagues, this is a defining moment for this council. It's about doing the right thing by the people and what legacy we leave for the generation that follows us. We must not be found wanting. So I urge you, even at this 11th hour, to think again. Come and join us and vote against these proposals for a single unitary here today. It is the wrong way forward for Norfolk. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Watkins. I call upon the leader of the Labour group to speak to the motion which is being proposed by the leader of the council.
Thank you, Chair, and just start off by congratulating councillor Watkins, actually, because that was a very good speech and I would agree with pretty much every part of it. But I want to focus on whether this business case presents a model that would deliver what it actually promises, not compare it with others. Those of us who've been around councils for some time know it isn't just the headline big-ticket costs that need to be addressed by local government reorganisation. Apart from external auditors' definitions, it's part of accountancy speak, this council has no working definition of what constitutes value for money, nor do we have a county council definition of productivity. That leaves us short of benchmarks to compare information against. So when a report says that a single new unitary council could save loads of money but doesn't reveal the workings out, I treat those conclusions with sceptical caution. Much is made of senior management savings. I ask what model is used for a single unitary and what assumptions have been made about the structures of other models. The answer is that it's been assumed that, for example, three unitaries would mean replicating the same senior management structure as a single unitary three times over. I challenge that assumption. It's not just about the headline cost. We've all bought cheap and regretted it when we should have spent a bit extra and got better value for money. A new council model is a chance to think anew, not as this report often does, use language that makes it more of a prospectus for this council. And seriously, excusing it, as suggested in the amendments on the supplementary agenda to this document, looks like an afterthought, once the administration have been caught out from getting it wrong in the original report. Unitary authorities join up services, that's their purpose. But the proposed... But so much of the resource in any local government structure potentially is taken up with transaction costs. Working out who is responsible for what and the sheer weight of stuff that simply slows things down, as all of us will have experience of knowing. The core of this business plan is the neighbourhood teams and neighbourhood committees. Rather than streamline, simplify and improve community accountability and understanding, the proposed model would make it more complex. I doubt it would make it to vesting day. Twenty are mentioned for an average population of between 20 and 30,000 population. We have nearly a million residents. If that's between 20 and 30, you know, that's quite a lot, actually, and probably more than the 20 which is in the report. I don't want to spend too much time on Norwich. I haven't got time for that. I echo everything that councillor Watkins said, but let's use it as an example. Norwich would probably have, or qualify, for three, four, maybe five area committees. It's not going to happen, is it? It's going to be four area committees that will combine into one. It would be inefficient, unworkable and frankly not worth the bother even thinking about having just one. So we'd have one committee with 32-plus councillors on it, starting to look a bit like a city council. And as area committees compete with each other during the budget formulation rounds, the familiar arguments about Norwich sucking it in will swiftly reemerge. Actually, all we're doing is recreating in a different form exactly the kind of problems which we've got at the moment of competition between different areas and different parts of the rural and urban parts of the county. Anyway, 20 committees is unrealistic, and there's no way that a new council could sustain that number of area operational teams and committees. Operational teams would be amalgamated to be more efficient, immediately cover more than one neighbourhood, and the concept immediately becomes diluted. Who would manage them? Are we really going to have around 20 area managers with support teams? How does that stand up to cost scrutiny? The area committees will be formally constituted under the Local Government Act 2000. And as much as I respect our Democratic Services colleagues, what I can foresee is a legion of Democratic Services officers being required to arrange meetings, compile agendas, ensure reports and actions from decisions have followed up and write the minutes. We look in the back office. There is nothing more back office than Democratic Services. So we're really going to try and justify a unitary, single unitary, to Norfolk and the government by saying, to start off with, we need a huge back office operation. The report envisages business and voluntary sector sitting on area committees, but under scrutiny from councillor Long, and I don't want to steal his thunder if he's going to make the point himself, but he surveys decisions being made by those who are not responsible for the consequences. We were invited in the Corporate and Strategic Committee to suggest that voting should be restricted to elected councillors, and I don't have a problem with that, but what that doesn't do is then tell you how other interests, business and community interests and the voluntary sector, will get their voice heard. They're not an afterthought. What's the alternative being proposed? There isn't one. Potentially, we start off with putting in a bid where either decisions aren't viable because of who's making them, or alternatively, we finish up excluding, orphaning a whole pile of interests before the new council even gets off the ground. And it's not so easy to be cavalier with who makes decisions and exerts influence over decision-makers. Decisions made by area committees will be subject to calling. Exhausted even thinking about it. There's no suggestion how that might work, but 20 committees' decisions subject to calling by councillors from other parts of the county, they might boggles at logistics and accountability trial for decisions. The joy of unitary councils is clarity about who's responsible. It's the council. Let's not be naive and pretend the unitary councils will solve all of the problems, but new ones shouldn't add to the confusion. The proposed neighbourhood structure is necessary to attempt to deal with the enormous size and remoteness of parts of Norfolk, but the proposal is so clunky that it's going to make matters worse. Sprawling, disconnected, bureaucratic, inefficient, not going to make it to vesting day. Look at the structure. We have one leader of the council with massive powers over vast geography, nine other cabinet members, the business case is already seeking to increase the number of cabinet members. Maybe we should look at the other side and say, is the council too big for these huge jobs? And we need more councils, rather than just more people to 12 or whatever it is. I don't think there's still going to be anything like doable jobs at that sort of scale. 168 councillors. There's no chamber in Norfolk big enough to contain them. It might be that most people engage with their council close to home, but they also want to know how they can hold those they elect accountable for the big decisions, council tax for a start. So we need to make sure that those 168 councillors, people like us, post the elections, get the right sort of opportunity to have the say in the right sort of forum with the right sort of accountability. And we still have more than 500 town and parish councils to be offered the opportunity to take on extra functions. Now, I'm all in favour of that. Devolution down as far as we can do is fine, so long as it's not a free-for-all. But from a resident perspective, looking up at the pyramid as it currently exists, they see two or three tiers. With a single unitary as set out in the business case, there's a hotchpotch of responsibilities with no clear point of responsibility. We've seen the problems where the lines of accountability are unclear. Flooding got mentioned a little bit a while ago, but it's a good example. And how have we dealt with flooding through a partnership? And how should we deal with a lot of the issues that have problems across multitudes of organisations? We do it through partnerships. And we've got really good examples of doing that. Flooding is a pretty good example already, actually. But if you look at Greater Norwich, the Greater Norwich Development Partnership and its various iterations, that's gone over multi-decade, multi-council, multi-party, multi-government. It shows that agreement, unique agreement, is possible even on planning and development, which is one of the most wicked issues in the canon of difficult problems. There's little in this business case that suggests genuine partnerships as a way forward. On top of that, it's a confusing plethora of expensive layers. Now, I don't think that minor details include things like where does Norths fit into this business plan or the future of council housing, but Great Yarmouth has got 5,000 council houses, Norwich has got 15,000 council houses. There's no mention of those in the business plan and how they're going to actually be operated. As we heard from the question to the leader, Norths and the other wholly-owned companies are a crucial part of an organisation of a new council. They can't be left for two years down the line for an implementation, for the implementation stage. This is a bit like an aeroplane, so look, we've got this great idea for an aeroplane. We don't know how the wings are going to fit on, we don't know how the engine is going to work.
Councillor, you're out of time, could you just sum up?
Yep, we don't know where the pilot's going to sit, but, you know, give us a couple of years and we're sure it's going to fly. It's not going to fly. I think it would be unwise to take it forward from today and actually quite embarrassing. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And I call upon councillor Shibley Sexton to speak to the motion on behalf of the Green Group, please.
Thank you. I'd like to take a little time to reflect on the local government reorganisation process for Norfolk, and let me start with some positives. Our current setup is complicated. Many residents simply don't know which council is responsible for which service, and is it district, is it county? Sometimes it's both, and that confusion is very frustrating for people, and it can also slow down decisions. A single more streamlined structure could help. It has the potential to simplify things, cut out duplication and make a system easier for residents to navigate. If we spend less money on overlapping systems and management, there's a chance to put more money in frontline services, the things people see and rely on every day. A single unitary would open pathways for more strategic coordination between services and allowing a more holistic approach to tackling and supporting residents struggling with issues such as the ongoing housing shortage or reducing and tackling homelessness, and a more effective and ambitious strategy for improving environmental health. However, these are critical areas that are notably lacking from the proposal. All that being said, this doesn't take away from our very real concerns about the proposal and the process and for the wellbeing of Norwich and Norfolk. About five years ago, South Norfolk and Broadland councils consolidated to save costs. To this day, it hasn't saved a penny, not on staffing, not on administrative systems there, IT hasn't even been consolidated. This leads me to my first main concern, which is about the pace. We are looking to introduce a new system combining an area of approximately 160 councils and a population 50% larger than the next largest unitary. A massive logistical undertaking and with no external independent assessment, it's hard not to worry that the cost-saving projections are optimistic at best. All while key features don't seem fully thought out. Even the neighbourhood area committees, which go into a lot of depth in the proposal, have some key constitutional issues. Whilst the principle of being able to place the power to support a community in the hands of that community, the neighbourhood area committees have a few core issues, the first being, how will they be held to account? If they are spending taxpayer money, they should be accountable to taxpayers. If we have members, voting members, who have decision-making power with taxpayer money, who are not elected, how will the taxpayers be able to hold them to account? And then, will members be remunerated for their labour? If not, then I worry this will only increase socio-economic inequalities within communities as more affluent areas have residents who are more able to give up their time for this unpaid labour. If you're struggling to make rent and you're working a stupid amount of hours every week, how are you going to find time to then help support your community if this is the main way you can do so? Next is that Norwich and Great Yarmouth and Kingland don't have parishes. The paper goes out of its way to stress the importance to NACs of parishes. There is less than a paragraph dedicated to the community functioning of our... Sorry, I've got confused. There's less than a paragraph dedicated to how they are going to function when there's entire pages dedicated to how important parishes are to these communities' functioning. These are the largest cities and towns in Norfolk, and they don't seem to work under this system, and it leads me to worry that they'll be left with councillors who are expected to be held accountable to their community for the actions where they will be a minority on these boards. If they're the only people that could be held accountable and they cannot have a say in how these are run because they are a minority, this is just unfair and unconstitutional. And then my last is, what do they do? I have read this paper many times and I can't see a clear remit. It says it changes. They work within the community, but it doesn't outline what their powers will be, what their powers will be over, how and will they clash with parish councils. Speaking of parish councils, much of the business case stresses on the cost-saving benefits of this process. There are concerning aspects of a single unitary proposal regarding the costs, especially under Part D, Section 18, Page 51 of the proposal, a new relationship with town and parish councils. Page 52 lists local choices on offer where it suggests town and parish councils should take on the following services: minor road and footpath repairs, grass-cutting, verge maintenance, street cleaning and litter collection, recycling and waste and education initiatives, community transport schemes, local terrorism promotion and visitor support, environmental health checks and pest control, climate action projects and green initiatives, tree planting, biodiversity screens, winter gritting, snow clearance, flood prevention, drainage maintenance, local event coordination and support, dog waste bin management and enforcement, public realm improvements, beautification, community safety and neighbourhood watch support. One of the things that I've outlined in the proposal is that they want to build robustness within local communities. How are they going to do that when they seem to be putting more emphasis on volunteers doing unpaid labour? This is not robust when we're in a cost of living crisis and a housing crisis where people are struggling to buy groceries and you're expecting them to work more, do more for free with greater responsibilities and less support, considering they'll have fewer councillors to lean on for support. Another cost-saving measure would be staffing. Combining so many authorities will lead to redundancies. Has the council considered the risk of brain drain from our local authorities and thought about how to mitigate this? Because why would somebody who is capable and skilled apply to work in a local authority here in Norfolk with the acts of LGR looming over their head? And then my last major concern, and this is absolutely central, is poverty and inequality. Too many families in Norfolk are already struggling, we know this. Whether it's with housing, heating, food or transport, there are communities where child poverty rates are high, where older people are isolated and where access to community services are already limited. Take coastal communities, for example. In places like Great Yarmouth and parts of North Norfolk, there are serious issues with poor housing and seasonal work, or rural areas where buses have been cut and people without a car are left stranded. These are not abstract challenges, they are very real lived experiences. If reorganisation is driven only by savings on a spreadsheet, those families will feel the impact first. The danger is that bigger and more authority could make this gap wider between those who have resources and those who do not. That cannot happen. Reorganisation must be part of the solution to tackling inequality, not another obstacle. It has to deliver better outcomes to the most vulnerable, and if it does not do that, it will have failed its most important task. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And I'll call upon the leader of the Independent Group to speak to the motion proposed by the leader of the council.
Thank you, Chair. Fellow councillors, we meet today not merely to debate the technical proposal but to defend the very soul of local democracy in Norfolk. The government's call for local government reorganisation under the devolution bill is clear. They seek councils big enough to deliver but close enough to care. And yet Norfolk County Council's answer is a single unitary authority, a lumbering leviathan that would swallow up our district, centralise power in Norwich and call it progress. Let us be clear, this is not reform, this is regression. Read the county's business case carefully and you will notice something odd. It is written in the first person, "We will do this, we will say that, we will deliver everything." Who is this "we"? It's not West Norfolk, it's not Breckland, it's not North Norfolk, it's not South Norfolk, it's not Broadland, it's not the city, it's not the parishes. The truth is harsher, none of us will exist, boroughs, district, city, councils that people actually know, all abolished. This is not the county council growing, it is every other council vanishing, replaced by a remote sprawling construct if this report is supported. Right from the very beginning of this sorry process and right up to today, democracy has been brushed aside. Statistics have been twisted when convenient and quietly buried when they become too difficult to calculate. Statistics have been twisted when convenient and quietly buried when they become too difficult to calculate. On Monday at scrutiny, members were fobbed off with evasions and non-answers. We were even told that asking about the most important aspects of this council's work, council houses and the future of wholly owned companies, was mere minutiae that didn't warrant inclusion in the report. But let us not forget the tone that was set at the very start. Before a single boundary line had been discussed, before a single financial arrangement was even on the table, the deputy leader of this council announced that the West would be bankrupt from the start. Think about that. Bankrupt from the start without knowing a single fact, figure or ambition of the districts concerned. That is not leadership, that is not evidence-based policy. That is nothing more than a desperate attempt to bend the numbers to fit a predetermined outcome worthy of a Politburo. And yet today, this monumental decision, a decision that we will reshape our county for generations, has potentially been decided by just five people. Five individuals out of more than 900,000 people who call this county home. Let us not forget that these are the same people who delayed democracy elections this year, clinging to power to ensure they could drive their agenda forward. How then are we supposed to trust the judgement of a cabinet that claims constitutional authority for itself while denying the same authority to the very councillors elected by the people of Norfolk? Why do they believe that they are alone capable of making this decision while we elected representatives are not? Colleagues, the answer is simple. They do not trust democracy because democracy would not deliver the outcome they want. As Benjamin Franklin once said, "When the people find that they can no longer hold their government accountable, they will cease to be free people." This will not be Norfolk's rebirth, it will be Norfolk's funeral. We must judge the future by the past. What is the record of Norfolk County Council's leadership? A 200 million funding gap in their own medium-term plan, repeated overspend, missed savings targets, endless excuses. This is not the fault of officers who worked tirelessly, this is about the council's leadership. Leadership that has chosen centralisation over fairness and opacity over accountability. Shakespeare and King Lear declared, "Nothing can come from nothing." Well, West Norfolk has heard the promises before, fairness, investment balance, what came of it? Nothing. And now the same leadership with the same voice says, "Trust us again." Why should we? Under this single county unitary, 900,000 people, 168 councillors, all sharing seats. Martin, budge up, I need to sit on your lap. 14-hour meetings if all councillors exercised their democratic right to speak. Roughly 5,500 residents per councillor, 2,000 square miles, over 540 parishes. Many councils will be saddled with a dozen or more parish councils to service. So much for local where it matters. This is not local, this is nowhere. Representation will be stretched so thin it will snap, communities will be left voiceless. Norwich, for all its virtues, cannot speak for every part of Norfolk. West Norfolk remembers, Breckland remembers, the coast remembers, we remember skewed funding formulas, consultations that never reached us, promises made and broken. Churchill reminded us, "The price of greatness is responsibility." But this proposal seeks greatness without responsibility, control without consent. And now, colleagues, to the great conjuring trick of 39.8 million of annual saving. How neat, how precise, how utterly plausible. They are not guaranteed savings, they are based on biased, flawed assumptions. They are presented with false precision of a decimal point, as if Norfolk's future could be predicted to the penny. They assume economies of scale as though Norfolk were a supermarket, not a living county of rural villages, market towns and coastal communities. It is not economics, it is theatre, spreadsheet pantomime. And what does history tell us? North Yorkshire was promised transformation. Within a year, overspends, children's services in crisis, rural community is voiceless. East Riding and York, unitaries for decades, still facing budget overspends and reserves at breaking point. And Birmingham, well, let's not go there. If size is the answer, why do the largest unitaries continue to bleed red ink? Churchill said, however beautiful the strategy, you occasionally look at the results. The results are large unitaries are plain deficits, overspend, broken, speak plainly about fairness. In West Norfolk, people do not trust the county council and they have good reason. We know that the A47 is longer east to west than west to east. We have a very fresh experience of promising a road funding that is not going to materialise. We remember regeneration delayed while others proposed prospered. We remember being told, "Wait your turn." And now the county says, "Hand over everything, housing, planning, waste, economic development." And this time, it will be different. We are being asked to believe that communities over 70 miles away from the seat of power will be understood, supported and represented. Shakespeare and Julius Caesar warned us, "The fault, dear Brutus, is not in our stars but in ourselves." The problem is that, not the districts, the problem is not the structure, the problem is the culture and leadership displayed by this cabinet of this county council. One unitary does not fix that, it magnifies it. There is a better way, a practical way. The future of three endorsed by six district councils offers three unitaries, east, west and city, each rooted in its own place, each big enough to deliver yet close enough to care. Councils that understand their communities, councils that remain accountable and visible, councils that can still share services where scale matters, but keep democracy alive and local. It is not fragmentation, this is federation. It reflects the government's own stated aims, subsidiarity, responsiveness, democratic legitimacy. As Lincoln said, "Government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from this earth." Let us not see it perish from Norfolk. To my colleagues from the West, our people will not be silenced. Our market towns, our rural parishes, our coastal communities, they deserve better than token representation in a mega council. A single unitary will not deliver this, it will dilute our voice, it will diminish our influence, it will deepen the distrust that already runs so deep. We must not let history repeat itself. This morning, we must choose the comfort of a centralised model that promises simplicity but delivers silence or the courage to fight for a future built on local pride, local power and local purpose. Do not be seduced by the siren song of efficiency. Efficiency without democracy is no efficiency at all. Churchill affundered, "To each there comes in their lifetime the special moment when they are figuratively tapped on the shoulder and asked to do something special. What a tragedy if that moment finds them unprepared or unfit for the finest hour. This is our moment, let it be our finest hour." Colleagues, this is bigger than party politics. This is about people, about representation, about the very survival of local democracy in Norfolk. To every councillor not bound by a cabinet loyalty, I say this: vote with your conscience, vote with your community, vote for your residents. Send a message to the government that Norfolk will not be reduced to a council monolith, that we stand for democracy, not domination. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ring. And I'll call on the leader of the independent progressive group to speak to the motion which has been proposed by the leader of the council.
Thank you, Chair. So the report is clear that people in Norfolk have told us they want to know their money is being put to good use to be able to access better services and to remove duplication and bureaucracy. The business case says a single unitary will empower local communities and give them more say on the local decisions affecting them. But how? By creating 20 neighbourhood area committees made up of stakeholders and councillors. But is creating this extra layer of committee structure only adding more bureaucracy and making governance more complex? We know the council has had to come up with something to address the issue of having one super authority of the size a single unitary would be to satisfy the government's requirement for a hefty community engagement element. These neighbourhood area committees will have public money spending powers and underpin the whole business case, but their scrutiny and accountability are unclear. And we don't even know if they've been kept or changed under a new political leadership which may well come. Then what? The county council is very good at some things and one of its biggest assets is undeniably its staff, officers with whom as members we all have the good fortune of dealing regularly. But our inboxes will also reflect areas in which this council is less successful. Disaggregation will be challenging, but we know public services as they operate now are under strain, that local government has been underfunded for years since the evil of austerity befell us under the last government. Our struggling adult social care budget and massive high needs block deficit are the glaring evidence, with the most innocent of all paying the price. Sadly, the new government seems set on continuing down that path. So I'm struck that rather than embrace this opportunity for radical change by the insistence throughout that we are naturally better able to take over the other functions from the districts purely based on our size and that we should just accept this as fact. Well, the evidence tells us otherwise. For me and my division, a recent active travel scheme scrapped without consultation, cycling infrastructure ripped out, actions that are a million miles from the claims we make about progress and commitment to sustainable and active travel. I think sometimes the council could do with being more mindful that its measures of transformation and success don't always match with the experiences of our residents. I see this starkly in the conversations and feedback from families who have children with special educational needs and disabilities. Like others have expressed, I don't agree that bigger is necessarily better, that economies of scale will naturally save money. They can also create monopolies and stifle competition in local businesses. And I definitely don't agree that less expensive always equals value for money. Sometimes investing early on or doing something differently with a bigger financial cost to get a good outcome can save money further down the line, prevent a crisis and demand on other services. We know what's important to the people we represent. Among them, good, accessible and responsive public services, to be supported, to look after their family, be able to safely get around, have their kids go to a good school and be happy, to have a decent roof over their heads. There are around 15,000 council houses in Norwich and my division has one of the largest proportion of council housing in the city. But with only vague references and no detail on social housing in this report, for that reason alone, it'd be very hard for me in good faith to recommend it on behalf of my residents. As Brian said earlier, it's regrettable that this council couldn't find consensus with the districts. And that doesn't bode well for a single unitary that has to join up and work in partnership representing nearly, the nearly 1 million people in our county going forward. It's too big, too remote from our communities and from what we see here would only offer more of the same with a few enforced tweaks. There's a chance here to do different, to commit to reducing inequality, to deliver public services locally and more impactfully to people. I don't believe, like many others here, that this business case for a single unitary council delivers that and so I can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Webb. And I'll call upon the leader of the reform group to speak to the motion proposed by the leader of the council.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. We've heard some well-written, well-executed speeches on this this morning, so I'm not going to go over it all. I'm sure councillor Ring wrote my script for me, but we'll leave it at that. Just going to recap on a few things that I'm not sure whether, even now, people sitting in this council chamber realise how different Norfolk is. It's so diverse, all around the county, we're different. Over in the west, the far west, as councillor Ring has said, we have different needs. A unitary will not help us, it will not help us one little bit over there. As you know, I resigned last May over this business and I got re-elected with pretty good numbers over it. My parish councillors, my constituents can see what's going to happen. They're going to be left out in the cold even more. A single unitary will forget West Norfolk, as it will North Norfolk, East Norfolk, South Norfolk. We're not going to, it's not going to work. Surely, surely, the cabinet can see this, sitting here and listening this morning to us. There's talk of us asking the parish councillors to do more. No disrespect, but I would think the average age of my parish council is well into the 70s. It's, it's heck of a job to get a quorum up at most parish council meetings. I doubt, well, I know, they've told me in no uncertain terms, they can put it somewhere else if they're asked to do more work. It just, that is a brutal, brutal facts of the matter. It takes a parish council three or four months to discuss play equipment. In a play park, how are they going to take on more business? They're just not going to do it. It's not going to happen. And please, members of this chamber, please look and think what we might be letting ourselves into. The three-tier unitary model which the Borough Council, North Norfolk and Breckland are talking about is the only way forward for us. I fully support that three-tier unitary and I cannot support this. I believe in democracy and one unitary model is not democracy in a county of our size. It never has been, it never will be. You can dream as much as you like, it just isn't going to happen. Over in our part of the world, the Norfolk County Council can't cut our verges at the moment. You're lucky if you see a grass got to whiz past, but it still doesn't cut your verges. Whereas I expect somewhere closer to the centre of Pearl will get theirs cut even more than they do now. These little niggly things stick in people's minds over in the West. Potholes, verges, overhanging hedges, dangerous corners, what will unitary do for it? Will they improve the situation? Can somebody tell me, will it all be better on the other side? I doubt it. So, summing up, I feel I cannot support this and I don't believe anybody in this chamber with conscience should support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kirk. The debate will now open up to all the other speakers with three minutes each to speak. So, so far in this order, I've had indications from councillor Borat, councillor Kemp, councillor Proctor, councillor Roper, councillor Long, councillor Sear and councillor Mackey. If anyone else wishes to speak, just please put your hand up in a normal way. And I'll ask councillor Borat to go first, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This week I was asked how I would vote in this debate. And I was quite surprised to be asked that question as I had presented the case for three unitaries at Breckland as the cabinet member for local government reorganisation. And I was very pleased to have got cross-party consensus across all the different parties at Breckland and worked a process that included all members and looked at all of the benefits and issues with local government reorganisation. And then being able to work with other authorities, some who were the same political persuasion like Great Yarmouth and some that were not, like Norwich City Council and Kings Lynn Borough Council, to get to a place where the residents are the key and our representation. I was told that I could vote for two different options in different councils. I was mystified by this because they're mutually exclusive and yet I represent the same residents on both councils. I listened to our residents and you will see the huge consultation that was done by the three Norfolk which dwarfs the consultation done by Norfolk County Council and the government's original consultation and the one done by the two. I think it's five times the size in terms of results and it is clear and unambiguous. I think that the idea that you can vote for two different solutions but represent the same people is just weasel words. I mean, you could construct an argument and, but you would be the only person who would be believing it. I don't think that the residents and the population of Norfolk will have any truck with your long and complicated argument about why it was... Because you have to stand up for your residents and what is right. So I'm going to be voting against this proposal today in line with the wishes of the people I represent. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borat, councillor Kemp.
Thank you, Chair. I can't support this proposal for a single unitary. It's undemocratic. It replaces six sovereign councils in the districts with largely unelected quangos. It replaces properly debated and ratified policies with people pledges. The report is full of platitudes, jargon and buzzwords, radical placed leadership, neighbourhood area committees or perhaps NACs if you like, and integrated neighbourhood teams or INTs. Well, I don't know about you, but I don't want to have local government dominated by NACs and INTs. I want to have councils like we've got now because, you know, district councils work and the county council works as well. And there's a very good reason why we have a two-tier system in Norfolk. We are large, we've got 700 villages, we've got over 2,000 square miles, we've got 6,000 miles of roads. This system works. We have got to be honest with the government. We've got to say government, we are not like Wigan or Manchester, the examples given in this report. We are not an urban area. We need to have the two-tier system. This proposal for just one unitary will rip the heart out of our county. This proposal for just one unitary will rip the heart out of our county, and we cannot do it. We have a responsibility for the proper running of services. Yes, services need reform, can't do it this way, by taking out huge swathes of the decision-making process and the teams that work. What are we going to leave? What are we going to be left with? Then there is the proposal to put more work onto parish councils, gritting of the roads. How are they going to do that? They're going to need huge machinery to do that, they're going to have to have teams of people there. Parish councils are already overloaded. You cannot get 12 people now on many parish councils areas which for ages have had no problems. People pay their council tax to councils so that councils can run services. They don't want to pay their council tax and have to run the councils themselves. This is a recipe for do-it-yourself government, and it's not right. So, council, I would also say to you that this proposal would massively disadvantage the west of the county, not only because we're furthest from Norwich, but there's long been a perceptual issue, in fact a sort of discrimination, from county hall towards the west. There is terminology used which we don't recognise, people saying you're in the west in county hall. Well, we don't say in the west that we're in the west, we're just where we are. People even describe us as the Wild West. I don't see us being wild.
Councillor, you're out of time, could you sum up?
I think the only answer is to reject this proposal today and write to government and say, we need to have the councils we do have already in Norfolk, the two-tier system is right for us, and long may it last. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Proctor.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. I'll keep things quite simple in what I'm going to say. I'm sure we all know that whatever happens with the local government reorganisation, all the existing councils will go and new councils will be formed, so that's the starting point. So, what are we actually talking about today? We're debating putting a proposal forward, the single unitary proposal, and I think we all accept that there are other proposals from other councils. Well, you'd expect that, wouldn't you? And Norfolk is no different to other areas in the rest of the country. I don't think it's anywhere that's going through this process that's actually got an agreed proposal from any county to what's going to happen in the future. And let's also bear in mind that the outcome of this is a government decision. Whatever we may think of the government, they've got to make this decision, and so surely it's incumbent upon us to make sure they have as many views and proposals as possible to foot forward, so they can make that decision. And in the business case, you're not going to get everything in there, that's impossible in a document of that nature. There will be, the issues have got to come up from that that are raised already to do with implementation, and again, that's not going to happen overnight, there's what a couple of years would happen once a decision is made, if a decision is made in a reasonable time. And let's also not forget, government's got a pretty massive job in this, in evaluating and assessing and consulting on the various proposals, so, especially the financial aspect, so good luck in that respect. So, I think the question is really, where do we go from here? Don't let's let a single unitary not get put forward. I don't think that's what we really want to do, stop a proposal going forward, certainly not as far as I am concerned. And as I said, there are competing views and bids, we've heard all the rhetoric about that earlier on, but this is a proposal from the county council that's a valid response from this council to government's requirement for local government reorganisation, so that's all we're voting on, putting a proposal forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Roper.
Thank you, Chair. Whether this proposal goes forward today to government really depends on whether it stacks up, whether you read this report and believe that it stacks up and is worthy of submission. Now, speaking for myself, I voted for a three-year district, I think that is a model which is worthy of submission. I actually have a lot of admiration for the model which has been put forward by South Norfolk, by councillor Elmer and his team there. I would want the government to be looking closely at those two models and seeing which is best. Does a single unitary stack up? No, I don't think it does. I think the intentions are very good from the county council, they want to build the simplest, sleekest, most efficient model they can, rather like a car, but when you look under the bonnet of that vehicle, actually you see one hell of a mess, and it is the governance structures which are the weakest point of this proposal and why it does not stack up. And I'll refer you to page 204 of the council papers, and I've said this at select committees, which should surprise no one. It talks about a single unitary, and our own consultants say that to be viable, to be viable, so that's a very high bar, this model is dependent on the creation of exceptionally strong, well-resourced and genuinely empowered neighbourhood-led structures. Now, do we really think that a model which is always talking about 20 at minimum NACs, it doesn't describe where they're going to report to, it doesn't describe their accountability, it doesn't describe how they're going to be resourced or what powers they're going to be? Do we really think that this is a commitment to the type of exceptionally strong model, which is the bare minimum that we have to deliver for this unitary authority to be viable? And that's the word viable, because if the commitment isn't there, if it falls anything below that exceptionally well-strong and well-resourced bar that has been set by our own consultants, we are really selling Norfolk residents down the river, because we will be proposing a council that will not work for them. And that is why I do not think this proposal is even worthy of submission and putting before the minister. And I accept the changes which have been made after select committee, I welcome the fact that it's now identified the non-delivery of the NACs is a risk, and it's in A15 of the new papers, but we really do not go far enough in mitigating that risk and showing our commitment to delivery, so I'm afraid I cannot support it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Long.
Thank you, Chairman. I thought it was further down the list, but here we are. We have heard a lot of rhetoric from a lot of both sides in this argument and discussion, and one of the points made, you know, you can't sort of vote here one way and vote somewhere else the other. Well, I absolutely agreed that the district proposal needs to go forward, because ultimately, and this is the thing we've all got to remember, none of us in this room are deciding this, none, no one in this room will have a vote, no one in Norfolk will have a vote. We didn't ask for this, it wasn't in the government's manifesto, they said, they had in their manifesto around devolution, but LGR has just bolted on to it as a fait accompli. Now, I believe that the two-tier system works perfectly well, and what it needs is a two-tier system with a fairer funding formula, so that the rural areas get what's right for the rural areas. And, you know, what did the new government do? Well, they done away with Rural Service Delivery Grant, so they can't see that it costs more to deliver a service across 200, 2,000 square miles, when, you know, some of the unitaries that they purport to would fit easily within my county division. Now, we've got a question asked of us, the government said, put forward a solution to what, you know, to what we want to do, top-down reorganisation of local government. We can either say no, to which they'll do it to us anyway, or we can put as many submissions in as we possibly can, and I would suggest we put this one in, we put the district one in, I support the fact that South Norfolk put in one in, I think every single parish council should put a separate one in, claiming that they want to be a unitary council as well, and they can take on all the services and do everything then, can't they? But the reality is, that of course would tie the civil servant up, civil service up for months and months and months, until hopefully we can get rid of this godforsaken government that U-turns on every single thing that they put forward and try and do. Now, will I support the submission? Yes, it's only Sam will put a submission in. Will I bend the ear of the minister to say what he ought to do? No, let him get on with it. If they mess up Norfolk, it'll be down to them. What we should have is Norfolk left alone, we should stay as two-tier and remain working as we currently do.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Sear.
Thank you, Chair. You're going to see a common theme by councillors from the west barring one. This proposal is being sold as devolution. Let us be honest, it's nothing of the, nothing of the sort. True devolution means giving power to local communities, to those who understand the challenges and opportunities of their area. What we have before us is the opposite, power taken away from West Norfolk and centralised in Norwich. That is not devolution, it's centralisation dressed up as progress. We know how this story plays out. Look at Cornwall, Wiltshire, Dorset, places where so-called devolution has stripped away decision-making, left communities on the periphery forgotten, where resources are funnelled to the centre, and we are asked to believe that West Norfolk will not share that same fate. With respect, that is a fantasy. Ask people in the market towns and rural villages of those counties if they feel closer to power since their councils were merged. They don't. The further you are away from the county town, the weaker your voice. If they struggle, how much worse will it be for West Norfolk, so often treated as an afterthought, even under the current administration? Let us be clear about money. Under a single authority, the outcome is obvious, investment flows east. Where the numbers look stronger while the west is left behind is not efficiency, it's structural unfairness. We see this already, businesses are disproportionately attracted to Norfolk, often because of an unseen funding bias towards the county town. I do not trust that a successor authority based in the east will suddenly correct that bias, and yet if West Norfolk were given a fair share of investment and support, it has the potential to thrive, generating jobs, growth and opportunities for our communities. The risk that is that under a centralised model, that potential will remain untapped. Meanwhile, the democratic deficit grows, fewer councillors overall, expected to act as a single point of contact for residents on all concerns and queries. People in our communities will be pushed further away from those elected to represent them. That is not local government, it's remote government. And let us be clear, it's not about efficiency, it's a power grab. It hollows out democracy, sidelines the periphery and tells our residents their voice matters less than the convenience of a streamlined structure. Six out of seven district and borough councils have rejected this model and endorsed a three-unitary alternative. That is not coincidence, it reflects the reality that those closest to communities understand what works. The three-unitary model recognises that Kings Lynn is not a suburb of Norwich, but the economic heart of West Norfolk, with its own sphere of influence and distinct needs. As a Liberal Democrat, I believe decisions should be made locally by those who know and understand their communities best. That is the principle of genuine devolution, it is the principle that gives people trust in their government and their councils.
Councillor, you're out of time, could you sum up this?
I will do, thank you. And it is this principle that these proposals abandon. This council must ask itself, do we want to strengthen the voice of our communities or do we want to leave them in silence? Because this does not do anything, and that's why I cannot support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Mackie.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I've waited some weeks and months to support this business case, it's something which I've long supported, a unitary authority for Norfolk, because after 20 years and four months of service to this council, you can see the complexity and demand on services, which is completely different from what it was even 20 years ago. And the business case here sets out a compelling case for the detail and common sense approach to efficient and effective delivery of services. I just wanted to touch on that, we've had a lot of rhetoric and sweeping statements about this, that and the other this morning, a bit of smoke around governance, quite a lot of quotes from Churchill, he was very good at crossing the floor but not on quite as regular basis as councillor Ring, you know, you, you, you know, these sorts of things are, you know, let's get down to what we're really talking about today, which is in this business case detailed, and I must applaud the officers who have put this together, in that it's about the delivery of services. Nobody's mentioned those in any great detail, and the council already provides, as the leaders said, 85% of the core services by local authorities is delivered by Norfolk County Council, so the idea that there is no unification across Norfolk already is a false one. And the notion put forward by some people, that with a stroke of a wand, these things would all be thrown up in the air and land down in a very neat and compact way, is simply fantasy. The idea that services could be broken up, particularly services around adult social care and children's services, without a significant impact on our residents and on the way they're currently delivered, just doesn't stack up. It is a nightmare in waiting for residents. As the chairman of the Members Engagement Working Group on Local Authorities, we have Local Government Reform, we have looked with fascination and compelling evidence from our senior directors and our large spending departments on the clear risks to breaking up and fracturing our core statutory services for residents, and I do wonder whether members from other parties who have been listening to that are willfully ignoring the advice and risks which have been demonstrated to them in a risk, in a rush to get to a three-unitary model. Now, councillor Watkins mentioned about the consultation we've had, no one has consulted with my residents in Thorpes and Andro or Hels and our old Cattin and elsewhere about being assumed into Greater Norwich. All of these things are good, but this, this business case is seen as some way bad, and the risks being put forward, what are the, the, what have I got there? Once universal services, that's the word, I read in my own writing, universal services suddenly become a postcode lottery for our residents, and what was provided as a joined-up strategy on children's services and adults with complex markets, thousands of contracts, suddenly becomes a hot potch of endless competition across the county. Looking at how we manage bus services, how we manage gritting, how we provide specialist care. Members ignore the rhetoric and support one sensible council for Norfolk. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, I think this is too important to move to the vote, and I'm not, unless there's an overwhelming vote from the council to do so, I won't move to the vote, I'll continue. So, right, the next person is councillor Thomas, please.
Thank you, Chair, and I agree, this is an important decision for us, but let's remember, we're deciding today whether or not Norfolk County Council submits an option. We've had many councillors saying they don't think that we should submit an option. Well, I'm a county councillor that's represented my community for 18 years, and I think they would think it's somewhat odd if I went back to my parishes and said, well, we didn't have anything to say, the county council didn't have an opinion, we've decided not to send anything to government, and we've left it to either be three-unitary or two-unitary. And I take exception with councillor Watkins yet again implying that only district councillors engage with their communities. I've engaged with my community for 29 years, 29 years to get a bypass delivered in my community, 18 of them as a councillor, but 11 of them as a, as a community activist, trying to get something done, and then I realised that perhaps the only way to get something done was to get on to the inside. So what we have now is people who, I'm astonished, understand and challenge and question social services, adult social services and children's social services, who think it's a good idea to split them up into chunks, let's split children's services into three, let's split adult social services into three, nobody, and public health, nobody has talked about the risks that come with that, and I'm astonished that councillor Borat, who was the cabinet member for adult social care before me, thinks that that's a good idea. This is about providing consistent, safe care for those who need it most, and yet here we are advocating that we throw out the county proposal for a single unitary to prevent the disaggregation of key services that people rely on, because it doesn't matter, does it? Well, all of us sitting in this council chamber will get there one day, we will need social care, and believe you me, I would not be able to sleep at night if we have to divide a department that is delivering huge numbers of, of care and support across the county and say that, that's fine, we can find three Ians. Well, I would, I hope that you do. If, if the government, and let's remember, none of us want to see the county councils go, none of us want to see the district councils go, councillor Kemp mentioned that, it's not our decision, it wasn't our request, it was the Labour government that have decided to split up and disembowel Norfolk and get rid of all its, its current structures. It wasn't us, we didn't ask. rid of all its current structures. It wasn't us, we didn't ask for it. But we've got to put forward the best answer possible. I just wanted to pick up on the parishes. They weren't talking about parishes taking over.
Councillor, you're out of time, could you sum up please?
I would just say, it was a case of could, not should. So a parish with a precept of £1,500 clearly isn't going to be able to take on services. But some of my other communities probably would be grateful to take on some of those roles.
Councillor, you're out of time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Steve Riley, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, the comments have been made around, well, it's just a, you know, it's just a proposal we're putting forward, and almost as if it doesn't matter. And I picked up on councillor Borat's point as well about voting two different ways. Well, of course it matters. I mean, we all represent people here, and it's true that the government are going to decide at the end of the day. However, we have to put forward the best proposal that we believe may have some chance of working outside of moving away from a two-tier system. The reason you said at Broglan, I'm a two-tier man, and always have been, always will be. It works. Finance in Broglan, I know that we work quite hard. Last year we were able to implement a counter-tax freeze, because we're efficient. Other districts are efficient. However, what I do worry about in this reorganisation is that the services that we provide, which are non-statutory, a lot of services we provide are non-statutory, help hubs, which help communities, lots of things, are all going to become under pressure and possibly cut, because once you have one huge unitary with the deficits there involved, lack of funding from central government for social services, we know, and other areas, that money will disappear. And therefore, we have service provision reduced, and we will have council tax in all probability going up. So I think the proposals that have been, this proposition has been put forward by the government is a bad one. I don't think it serves Norfolk in the best possible way. Having said that, what's the next best possible thing we can do? This is why all the work that went into looking at this in terms of districts, and I know South Norfolk, government is on proposal three, gives you some chance of having democratic responsibility, gives you some chance of proper administration and delivery, and not putting the onus on any question on parish councils, whether they can cope with that. I've been a parish councillor long enough in a district or a county councillor. I know people will simply walk away, and it's unfair, and people will be treated in different ways. Whatever way you look at this, I haven't got much time, I know, the best possible solution here for democracy, accountability and a chance of delivery is actually via a three-unitary system. One unitary system, in actual fact, would be a complete disaster. And all of the other unitaries that are coming to play, they've all predicted savings. Where are they? In actual fact, they haven't occurred. So I think the most responsible thing we could do is a three-tier. And I think it's actually be responsible for Conservative members not to vote for a single unitary, to actually sit on their hands on that and let a three proposal go forward. That's what I think is in the interest of Norfolk. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. The following councillors indicated where she speaks, councillors Neill, councillor Carpenter, councillor Dark and councillor Dixon, that order. I haven't seen anyone else. I propose after councillor Dixon to go to the, okay, I'll take councillor Story and councillor Bick, and then we will go to the second of the motion, and then the vote thereafter. Thank you. So councillor Neill, please.
Thank you, Chair. This one unitary model has so many flaws, and would rely on a non-existent volunteer sector taking on what should be done by elected representatives. The three-tier option is not perfect, but only the least worst option, and could be difficult to provide major services such as social care. As councillor Long said, the decision will not be persuaded by our proposals. It has already been decided by the Labour government, I'm sure, and they are only showing a democratic face to the public.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Carpenter.
Thank you, Chairman. And firstly, can I just say, it's nice to see Alison Birmingham in the council chamber today. I wish you well. Navigating the impact of changing what we have as to going into two or three, the effect on children's services will be catastrophic. The navigating of the impact and mobilisation of the national reforms, the disruption to key transformation programmes for children, the impact of stability of the workforce at an operational leadership level, and councillor Thomas has already raised that, there aren't enough people in the country, there aren't enough highly qualified, competent people in the country to run it. We are very lucky here in Norfolk. We have an excellent senior leadership teams in both adults and children's, and we should be grateful of that. The data and case management systems, the intervention across new structures, avoid fragmentation, complexity and develop of service deliveries, a loss of coterie, co, ah, I won't say that one, yeah, that one, with health and police, sorry. The safeguarding service, which is something we should all be aware of. The safeguarding service for the continuing, can't get my teeth in today, risks associated with cross-boundary case transfers, especially considering serious practice case reviews, because not everybody will have the same software in place. The distribution of high needs block. The market exploitation and division and fragmentation that will drive up commissioned services placement and workforce costs. I could go on, but I know time is very short here. But we do have a strong and stable leadership, well-supported and stable workforce, recruitment and retention, professionals, robust performances and assurance systems and child-centred practitioners. We're going to lose all that, it would be gone three parts to the wind. So I will be supporting this council in their submission. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Dark.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I've listened carefully to the debate, and I wasn't actually going to speak on this, but I thought on such an important debate, it's clear that I need to put out my position. And it was also after the comment that was made about councillor Long being the only councillor in the West that held the view that he did, I just wanted to back him up and say, Brian, I'm of the same mind as yourself in this. In terms of things, I look at this from a point of view is, am I the ultimate decision-maker? And at this critical moment in time, do I need to make a decision, particularly one that, as we've heard from councillor Thomas, has some real high risks for Norfolk residents around it, whatever the outcome? Now, in the West, significant work was done by the officers and councillors and the leadership there, emphasising the strengths of their bids, and countering what they felt might be weaknesses. Now, that will be exactly the same for councillor Elmer and his council, as it is in the work done by the officers that put an awful lot of time into this bid. Now, in my opinion, the central government that actually said, we are going to do this to Norfolk, we are going to have local government reform, come up with your options, and if you can come up with one, great. If you can't, we'll look at your options and decide. And I take on board councillor Proctor's point, we aren't alone in this, with councils that are doing this. I feel that at this moment in time, if I'd have abstained or voted against West Norfolk's bid going in, I would have prematurely stopped that bid being looked at by the decision-makers. And in that debate, and in the recommendations for West Norfolk, it said their bid wasn't finished. It wasn't totally refined, it wasn't the finished article. They were going to carry on pushing it, promoting it and making it better. And that is my expectation of if this goes forward, what this council's bid would do. But to stop one going to the decision-maker, we are saying that those risks have been considered, the strengths and weaknesses have been decided, and we have decided that that is not going to go forward. And for me, whether it puts me at odds with my community, or whether it puts me at odds with other councillors, I'd prefer all of the options to go in, and all the options to be decided upon, as good as they can be at the appropriate time. Because that way, I feel that we are serving our residents best. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Dixon, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Of all that I've heard this morning, I have to say, there are two speakers that probably cover most of the ground that I would expect to put to you this morning, first being councillor Mackey and the second being councillor Thomas. I won't repeat what they've said, because I think they've said it clear enough. What does concern me, though, is across this council chamber, there are those who have put forward a very different account of the proposals that are in consideration at the moment. And I'm sure some of that might be that they don't understand what the councils do, and in particular, this council do. Some of it, I think, might well be a very witting understanding of what we do, but for some reason, they are stuck in a model and a mould that is no longer fit for purpose. There is ample evidence of that throughout, not just this county, but elsewhere. So what can I add to what we've considered this morning? Well, I do have particular concerns about the process. Certainly, a government that gives you that task to do in a matter of a few months, I really have to wonder whether they are really serious about doing this in an open and a democratic way, that's based on real evidence and not a whole series of suppositions. So that's my first concern about the, I suppose, the flaw in the system. With regard to what has happened in other places, I looked at the commissioning document for the group of six councils. And I'll summarise that as, quite simply, we know what we want, and your job in a circle is to provide the evidence that enables us to support that. I have to say that it lacks credibility, it is stacked high with risk, and it is stacked high with aspiration. Turning to, what have we done then in the county council? Well, as councillor Mackey said, we've had a working group, and that working group has met several times. It has looked at, what does this council do? And we've taken deep dives into the most meaningful and the most expensive and resource-intensive services this council provides, across the county already. You know, 85% of that is already done, you don't have to disturb any of that, that's already in place. What we're arguing about effectively is 15%. And quite honestly, it doesn't make sense to me. But that approach from those six, for me, shows great predetermination and bias.
Councillor, could you sum up please, you're out of time?
I will. So, I'm afraid, for those reasons, I am not able, I'm not able to support a three-tier model, and I am supporting a single-tier model with an understanding that there is much more work to do to put flesh on the skeleton. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Story.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. As usual, Chairman, across the board, there's been some very valid points put forward, why or why not should we have a single unitary for Norfolk? The fact is, as we all know, and I hate to preach a gospel, that we sit here as all individuals, supporting all of Norfolk. And cases have been made, rightly so, I should imagine, for West Norfolk, other parts of Norfolk and what have you. The fact is, that's all of Norfolk going forward. We have to find, we are charged with finding a proposal, which we feel is probably the best way for Norfolk's concern. But when I make a decision, Chairman, I always look at two sides of the coin. I like to hear all of what's on the table to make my mind up. So I hope at the end of the day, I've had all the information, that I can be sure, in my mind, that's the right decision to make. And if the government takes this forward in the precept they're supposed to be taking at forward one, two or three, they will have those proposals, one, two and three, put forward to them. So I'm sure and I hope that then they will look at those, and hopefully choose the best points in each to come forward with the right way for Norfolk. Our officers, whether that's West Norfolk, Norfolk or wherever it may be, have spent many hours, and so has many members, trolling through to try and get these reports together, to put before us to make that decision. So in my mind of fairness, to the people of Norfolk, going forward, this is our one chance for Norfolk. I've always told the residents wherever I've been, to have their say, put their fears forward, because that's the most important, all the people in Norfolk. And to my mind, Chairman, as I've said, these proposals going forward, I hope they'll take the best out of each. That is why, when I talk to my residents, that I'm supporting this proposal, Kings Lynn and West Norfolk's proposal, and probably other councils' proposals as well, because I feel, having got this information, which has spent many hours of people's time put to the government, and let's just hope, those who make this decision will have enough sense, and that is common sense, to go forward and put what's right for Norfolk, not for them, think of the people of Norfolk and Norfolk as a whole. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bick.
Thank you, Chairman. I have to remind councillor Story, at the last full council meeting, councillor Jamieson said the people would decide, he had to backtrack on that, the people have no real, the whole democracy thing here is a sham, and I think we all know that. But let me address two crucial issues. The first is, I don't think there are going to be many people in this chamber, officers included, who've ever conducted a large-scale integration. I can tell you two things about them. One, they never go according to plan, and two, you only get the savings that you're telling people you're going to get with large-scale redundancies, because that's what comes with integration. And you all really need to understand that. But the other, much more crucial thing here is, and I do not think it's possible today for us to take a responsible decision. Look at Suffolk County Council last week. Cabinet announced they're going for a single unitary, but they don't know what their funding settlement's going to be. Do we? How can we make a responsible, informed, adult decision about which route to take, when we don't know what the funding's going to be? It's ludicrous. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Now, as the second has reserved, councillor Jamieson has reserved the right to speak, I'm now going to ask him to second the motion. And you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just mentioned to councillor Bick that the chief executive has indeed undertaken a large-scale reorganisation previously. And this is really summing up what so often we've heard. We've heard a lot of people say that the most important thing is residents, and that residents are the key. Well, we asked residents what they wanted from a new council, and the first thing they said was value for money. And it's worth making the point that responses to the three-unitary's own consultation highlighted financial sustainability as the single strongest concern. Residents want improved services, they want to avoid the need to split services up. And indeed, the three-unitary bid went on to score a single unitary as the best for right-sized councils to achieve efficiencies, improve capacity and, crucially, withstand financial shocks. And financial shocks, if any of you ever look at the newspapers broader than Norfolk, it is worth thinking that there could be some considerable financial shocks globally at the moment. I see you laugh, councillor Bick. It will, it will, it'll be interesting to see when those come up. So this is what one council will deliver. It will have strong foundations, it will be able to withstand those financial shocks, and as well as being the most cost-effective. And those strong financial foundations will enable future councillors in the And those strong financial foundations will enable future councillors in the new entity to have the maximum scope to take sensible decisions, to invest in services and the maximum scope to take decisions on the level of council tax. Because, of course, there is that annoying thing for those who want two or three, that one unitary is modelled to save nearly forty million pounds a year. Three unitaries to cost over thirty-four million pounds a year. One-off transition costs will sink three unitaries, eighty-one million. And that's why I am so concerned for the residents of West Norfolk, of which, of course, I am one. An immediate deficit of twenty-one million in the West Norfolk. Budgets will lead to significantly higher council tax if we are unfortunate enough to have that decision thrust upon us. And so I've read the two Norfolk proposals and I think, frankly, they've created a new literary genre, that of financial fantasy fiction. Because the claim that they can magic away the demand issues in children's services or in adult social care and saves considerable sums of money, more money, they're saying, than we are in fact forecasting, is an act of supreme irresponsibility. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. We now come to the point, I offer the leader of the council the right to reply at the end of the debate. And you have three minutes, please.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a decision to submit a business plan. And the decision has actually already been made by this council when we looked at the options appraisal. We decided then that the single county unitary was the one that we were going to work up. So this debate here is just a discussion on that. And we didn't have to have this debate because this is an executive decision. That's the way that the law works. So the idea is that the executive has to take note of any recommendations coming forward and then decide whether to submit the plan or not. And as has been discussed widely in this chamber, consultation, which will happen with the public, has yet to occur. We have consulted with them. We have done some sort of basic consultation with them. But we haven't done the actual official consultation. That will be done by the government and it will happen in the autumn, once the government have decided whether they're going to put any of the plans that have been submitted forward. And it's at that point that we have to ensure that the maximum number of our residents have their say on what they want to see going forwards. That's where we are at the moment. The government will ultimately decide. And whatever happens, we've all got to implement that. And no one's under any illusion about how difficult that's going to be. So we mustn't fall out with each other about our differences. And I have to say that officers and leaders have come together and we've tried to find some common ground, certainly on what the facts are, what our current asset bases are, what our costs are, so that we can actually put these proposals together. It's unfortunate we can't come to one conclusion, but then no other area has managed to do that. But at least with three options on the table, our public will get the chance to decide. And I just hope that this government will actually listen to them. And then we're going to have to move forward. So this is not about how many councils we have or preserving fiefdoms. This is about effective, efficient, value-for-money services for Norfolk people and the right structure for the future. And so I would recommend to you that you say to Cabinet, please take this plan forward so we have the maximum number of options on the table.
Thank you, councillor. We now come to the vote on the recommendation. If that could go up on the screen, please. Is there anyone else apart from councillor Ward who has not been able to vote? Could you, if you're happy to give us an indication of how you'd have voted?
Four.
Do those numbers tally up? Including councillor Ward, that's sixty-two, I think. We still seem to be one more short. Could everyone just check that their voting box has been filled in? Or indicate how you'd have voted? Okay, so if we add councillor Ward on, four thirty-four abstentions, one against twenty-eight. So the recommendation is carried forward. Thank you. I think it's probably the most, I think it's part of the meeting everyone's looking forward to. We'll have, it's twelve forty.
Chair, can we have the scrolling through of names, please?
Yes, certainly. But we'll have a half-hour break as this, once this has been scrolled through. And we'll come back at twelve forty. Thank you. So we'll resume again at twelve forty. Thank you very much.
Right, welcome back members and we have fifty five minutes of this council meeting remaining to do it. So we come to agenda item ten Cabinet Reports and Questions to Cabinet Members and it can be found in pages, starting in pages two hundred and ninety eight, if that's correct, and we now call upon the leader to move the Cabinet Report for the meetings which were held on Monday the fourth of August and Monday the first of September twenty twenty five.
I so move, Chairman.
Thank you Leader. We now have thirty minutes time for questions to Cabinet Members and that can relate to anything within the remit of a Cabinet Member's portfolio and it's not limited to items which appear on Cabinet Reports. Items as usual will be taken in the prescribed portfolio order and can be to any Cabinet Member and I'll start the first round by selecting the first questioner from the Liberal Democrat Group, councillor Sayer.
Thank you Chair. My message, my question is for councillor Eagle. My youth unemployment motion was referred to the Select Committee in May, yet four months later it still hasn't made its way onto the Forward Work Programme. While the motion sits in bureaucratic limbo, young people across Norfolk are struggling to find work. Can you guarantee it will be scheduled for the committee's next meeting? And if not, can you explain to Norfolk's unemployed young people why their futures aren't considered urgent enough to prioritise?
First of all, I think you'll find that young people are a priority, which is why there is the boost, the boost plan, which is a programme which is operating in Breckland and Kings Lynn and it's been very effective and it's looking at those people. We are always looking and helping support young people and I think it's very, very important and those opportunities are crossed all ages, obviously high skilled jobs and those other areas. If we haven't got young people staying in Norfolk, we have got a major problem. So let's not knock our young people and start saying that because most of them are very, very capable people and have a huge range of abilities. And once we keep saying there's nothing there for them, then they start to leave. So let's get that clear and let's start getting behind everyone who wants to work and stay in Norfolk, of whatever ability and range, because it doesn't matter whether you're a care assistant, you are important to our care homes. We are all going to be old one day and we're going to need those. It doesn't matter you want to be a dentist, doctors, anyone, high tech skills, we need them. But that is there. I'd have hoped you'd have raised it with the chairman of that Select Committee, but I will take it up on your behalf on that point. But there, again, that's what the chairmans and vice chairmans are there to do their committees and take it up. But I agree and I will raise it for you on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you councillors. Next question to the Labour Group and councillor Smith-Clare.
Thank you Chair. Penny, this is a question for you. I've received communication from a number of teachers and learners regarding experiences of disruptive behaviour, threats, threats and misogyny in their classrooms, within the worst cases, police having to attend. What additional steps should we as a council do to address these genuine concerns and support colleagues from the teaching profession and the young people that they assist?
Thank you councillor Mike Smith-Clare. This is news to me and I would suggest perhaps if you could write to me with details then I will get, we will be contacting the schools straight away. Thank you.
Thank you Penny.
Thank you councillors. Now go to the Green Group, if there are any questions.
Thank you. This question is for councillor Plant. Given that the council has powers under the provision one hundred and thirty two point two of the Highways Act to remove unauthorised affixes and that the recent unauthorised affixes that have been going up en masse in Norfolk's highways, especially given the distress they have caused across Norfolk and given that their placement appears targeted to intimidate certain groups that have been specifically selected, chosen based on protected characteristics, legally protected under the two thousand and ten Equality Acts, especially with the consideration that to do nothing or even being seen or perceived as doing nothing may be seen by the electorate as the county council taking a side, being complicit or even endorsing such discriminatory and unlawful targeting. Does councillor Plant believe highways have been appropriately exercising their power to remove the recent unauthorised affixes? And does the county council have any plans to enforce provision one hundred and thirty two point one of the Highways Act? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, removals are done under our powers under the section one three two point two act, which states the highway authority may remove any picture, letter, sign or other mark which has without either the consent of the authority or an authorisation given by or under an enactment been painted or otherwise inscribed or affixed upon the surface of the highway or upon any tree, structure or works or on the highway. And it's important to note the word may, so this is not mandatory. However, in Norfolk for many years we've had an approach to remove and this continues and we will remove things from a highway that shouldn't be there under normal maintenance procedures with the safe, safe element there as well for the workers and we'll make sure that we do that. What we will not do is react immediately to acts that are going on. You mentioned a lot of words in there which I don't recognise that should be attached to our national flag. That is our national flag, England, Great Britain, that's what I am, English and Great British. And I don't agree with the, the, the terms that are being used of xenophobic and racist either. So I, I, I am, I will instruct for them to be removed during normal maintenance and that's what will happen in Norfolk, but I do not recognise how you've just described our national flag. Thank you.
Thank you councillors. Can you tell me under which, which section you're making your point of order?
Sorry.
So that's, that's not, that's not a point of order.
In that I've been misconstrued, that I never said, correction, thank you. Point of order of a correction, I never said anything about racism. I said it was targeted people with protected characteristics.
Right, thank you. I think, I think that, that point has been made, thank you and clarified. Thank you. We now move to the Independent Group. Nothing from the Independent Group, the Independent Progressive Group.
Thank you Chair. My question is to councillor Plant. In the Cabinet Report of the first of September, we see that seven point naught naught six million were reduced from the capital budget from the marble of the Kings Lynn Southgate Roundabout Study Project now. This project was never going to work, indeed the project managers themselves said it wouldn't reduce congestion, it would actually increase it, which was quite unacceptable. So what sensible options is the cabinet going to introduce? For example, around Park and Ride on the Nauru's Business Estate and a Parkway Station on Nauru's Way as part of the new Klatz proposals, are we going to see something concrete and something really sensible to address the issue of congestion and increase the, the level of green transport into Lynn?
Yes.
Thank, thank you councillor. We now move on to the Reform UK Group please, no questions to that, and Conservative Group, councillor Mackie I think.
Yeah, thank you very much Chairman. This is a question to the member for Adult Social Services. I wonder if she could update us please on how this council's investment in housing with care and supportive living is improving the lives and outcomes for our residents as well as easing the pressures on, on her budget. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the question councillor Mackie. I'm very pleased to acknowledge the huge amount of work that's being done around independent living and supported living by this council. Much has been made during the, the local government reorganisation debate about debt and I would say probably all of us that had a mortgage had a debt that we owed to the mortgage company or the bank, whoever we borrowed the money from. Norfolk County Council, I would say, has made prudent capital investment in providing bespoke facilities for those to, many of our residents, people over fifty five who've got care and support needs to live independently. They've also made capital investment to those who supported living for working age adults who also have care and support needs. We've invested twenty nine million in independent living and we've invested eighteen million in supported living. I've been very pleased to don my hard hat and steel toe cap boots on many occasions across the county during groundbreaking ceremonies and in fact a topping out ceremony most recently in Hunstanton, where I think councillor Jamieson and I were hugely impressed with the, not only the pace of, of delivery of that scheme, but the quality. But this isn't just about delivering a scheme that provides support, it's also providing savings to the county council. So once all the targeted units in independent living are delivered, it will deliver an annual saving of ten million pounds a year and it'll be a six million pound saving in supported living. So I say to those people who say that the council shouldn't invest, just look at what's being delivered. This is bespoke, purpose built, supported living for people to remain independent and to live in a community that enables them to have help and support when they need it, but to have their own front door and still have their own independence. I don't think we can put a price on that and I certainly am hugely grateful to the team that are delivering these projects at pace. We were somewhat held up by nutrient neutrality, but we now have a huge number of schemes that are already open, but we've also got a large number that were on site. And I just quote, Harlestone, Hunstanton, Loden, Stalham, South Wootton, Norwich, Norwich East, Gullston, Attleborough, Norwich again, Swaffham, Kings Lynn, Loden again, Harlestone, Norwich, North Walsall, Gullston, Norwich and Norwich East. Those are the number of projects that are being delivered in either supported living or independent living and I commend this, this council's prudent borrowing in order to deliver those schemes. They're either in the pipeline, I see councillor Ring is shaking his head, they're either in the pipeline, under construction or in the pre-planning phase.
Thank you councillors. That takes us to the second round and back to the Lib Dems.
Thank you Mr Chairman. The Lib Dem Group would like to as soon as possible move on to consideration of item fifteen, the motions, so we have no further questions. Thank you.
Right, thank you. I will go through the other groups. The Labour Group, do you have any, councillor Morphew?
Likewise Chair.
The Green Group.
Thank you Chair. Question for councillor Plant. Residents of Thorpe family are sure to welcome the upcoming twenty mile an hour reduction speed, which will help reduce rat running and also putting people at risk in, in that area on their walks to and from the schools. The last time we, we spoke in this chamber was regarding getting a feasibility plan together for the, for the Quebec Road area. We were discussing this in the last year and we've also had pavement reconstruction going on and so the road has actually been closed. I have asked, I have asked you in this chamber that we expedite that feasibility study, but as of yet I've had no contact or no information about that happening. I did write to officers just ahead of the road being closed and, and suggested that it was important to perform some of that feasibility study while the road was closed to see what the impact was of that road closure and I received no response. Can the cabinet member give me some assurance that the feasibility study will go ahead and will he also find out why, why it wasn't looked at while the road was being closed? Thank you. Residents are concerned, children are at risk and I wish we could get this moved forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I think a letter was sent to you, an email was sent to you explaining at one point that the, the roadworks that were current, that were going on did not have the funding in place to do the, the works that you were expecting, which were bollards, probably wooden bollards along the pavement, or a way of stopping traffic getting on the pavement, whether it be bollards, whatever it is. But the, the fact of the matter is that it wasn't in that financial package for the works that are being done on the road currently. I will find out what's being done about the, the safety works and I'll get back to you.
Thank you councillors. Takes us to the Independent Group, do you have any questions? No. Takes the Independent Progressive Group.
Yeah, my question to councillor Carpenter. The, the send survey that was sent out to families and professionals in January that closed in February, the results of that survey haven't been published yet and it does say on the website that they'll be published in June and there is still nothing that, that has come out to families and to those concerned and I wondered if you could update on that. Thank you.
Yes I can, because I have my director behind me.
Okay.
Yes, it will be published in, in the coming weeks. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to Reform UK Group.
So just one if I may, sorry, just one.
Sorry councillor Webb, could you turn your microphone off please?
Thank you. This may be a rather straightforward matter, but a parent of a disabled son for some reason gets two invoices, same date, same amount every month. When they asked what they described as the finance department, why that was, they were told that's just the way it's done. Two questions really, why is that happening and two, is it not possible to email these things?
I think the question is for me. Well, obviously I, I don't discuss cases in full council, but I think it would be better if you could write to me outlining and obviously with the family's permission to pass on information, confidential information and I will look into that for you, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you councillors. Councillor Proctor I believe.
Yeah, thanks Chairman. It's a question for the cabinet member for Corporate Services Innovation. Could she remind the councillor how many affordable homes, Repton Homes have built since its inception?
Thank you and I'd love to. So over in Attleborough for Albert Housing, a completely affordable scheme of forty eight over on our two largest sites, Hopton which has got two hundred units overall and Acol one hundred and thirty seven. We've not only met the local affordable housing target but significantly increased it. So specifics, Acol, we were asked to do thirty three percent, we delivered fifty and at Hopton the requirement was ten percent and we delivered thirty. So I think the chamber will agree with me. The facts on the ground show our commitment to affordable housing at Repton.
Thank you for that. Takes us to the third round. Liberal Democrat Group, seems to be for the Labour Group. No questions. The Green Group. No questions. The Independent Group. No questions. The Independent Progressive Group. Councillor Kemp.
Yes, my, my question is for councillor Plant and how on Monday there was a very serious accident at the East Coast Business Park in West Lynn. A cyclist came out of West Lynn cycle path and fortunately cycled into the pathway of traffic and the, the bund adjacent obscures views of the road and the foliage wasn't cut back and I've written to Highways about it and I still haven't had a response and it's feared that there could have been a fatality involved as well, but certainly a very serious injury. So please could the cabinet member do something about this please?
Yes, I have no details about that, so I will ask officers to respond to you.
Thank you. And then the Conservative Group and councillor Bainbridge.
Thank you Chairman. I've got a question please for the cabinet member for Corporate Services and Innovation. Councillor James, following our recent motion on telegraph poles, could you provide a current update of the situation please?
Thank you councillor Bainbridge. I'd really love to actually, because as luck would have it, yesterday the team met up with
have it, yesterday the team met up with the gang from Connections. There may have been some press on either side. I do love being able to be quoted as saying something was bonkers in the national press, which is always good fun, but let's stick to the positivity. So Connections have reported that the testing of our LoRaWAN system has given very, very good results and they're really positive about using it. Tick, well done. They're also really pleased that we can offer them our infrastructure and we're working also in partnership with the team over in Great Yarmouth Borough Council, things like buildings and other assets and they're really excited about using those. So, from what was sadly a little bit negative, but thank you all in this chamber for supporting that unanimously, we're having constructive dialogue and for want of a better phrase, we're getting stuff done that makes a difference for our residents and not loads of poles going up. Thank you.
Thank you councillors. Takes us to the fourth round. Liberal Democrat group, no one. Labour, no one. Green group, no one. Conservative group, no one. Councillor Mackey.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman. I wonder if I could ask councillor Plant a question regarding bus usage in Norfolk. I'd certainly like to thank him for the work which the team have done in Thorps and Andrew adding on additional weekend and evening services. It was just to update council on the increase in usage and the new electric buses coming to the county. Thank you.
Yes, thank you councillor. Well, as you know, through the BSIP scheme, bus usage across Norfolk has gone up between nineteen and twenty percent in the last year, which is even more than what's gone up in Manchester usage and if you consider that we're a huge county, that does tend to make it across a wider area than any other urban area. And it's really good news, we've just had a confirmation of twenty million pounds that are going to be brought into the area to put twenty electric buses in Great Yarmouth and change the depot there over to electric charging as well, which will be the second one in Norfolk following on from the first one that was in Norwich. So there is a continued push to try and get some low emission buses into the area. We're working hard to try and get more but it's really good that the bus companies are also putting in seven million pounds of their own money to make sure that this kind of scheme can continue. So yes, we have new routes, we have extended routes, we have extended times to routes and extended into the evenings as well on several routes and I believe that that's been sent out to all members this week as well as to the change in routes and the improvements in the routes. So if members want to look into Mr Wiggins' emails that he's sent out, you should be able to see some new timetables in there. But yeah, we're going from strength to strength with the buses at the moment, they are being more frequent and they are also more reliant as well because a lot of the works that we've put in on putting bus lanes in have made them more reliant. So when you actually get on a bus at one end, you know you're going to get to work or to the doctors or to the hospital at the other end on time and not be stuck in traffic jams. So it is really working across Norfolk and we're trying to put it in in several more towns as well. Thank you for the question.
Thank you councillors, that takes us to the end of the four rounds of questions. So we'll move on to item eleven, recommendations from committees and there are no recommendations from committees to this meeting. It's agenda item twelve, select committee reports. First is the Adult Social Care and Public Health Select Committee, that's the report from the meeting held on the eighth of September twenty twenty five. Councillor Gurney.
Thank you, I'd like to present the report and it's resolved, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Next one is the Children, Families and Communities Select Committee, report from the meeting held on Friday the twelfth of September twenty twenty five. Councillor Long.
Yes, thank you Chairman. You'll see on page three oh six, the committee dealt with a report on the Norfolk Youth Justice Plan twenty five, twenty six and also special education needs and disabilities and alternative provision improvement. And one of the requests from the committee was that we send a joint letter between myself and the cabinet member to request government that we release funding as promised for a new special school in Dunamark and Great Yarmouth. In addition to that, we have got a lot coming forward on our next round of meetings and I would just inform council that we have got Supporting Young Adults, NALT in Education, Employment and Training as on our agenda on the fourteenth of November. Also, school placement sufficiency for schools in Norfolk, schools and real estate preparing for the impact of local government reorganization. So a fairly hefty agenda coming forward, I think possibly answering one of the questions that was posed earlier.
Thank you councillor. Next one is Health over View Select Committee, report from the meetings held on Thursday the twenty fourth of July and Thursday the fourth of September twenty twenty five. Councillor Johns.
Thank you, I commend this to the council.
Thank you councillor. Next one is Infrastructure Development and Select Committee, report from the meeting held on Wednesday the tenth of September twenty twenty five. Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you Chair, just move to the report, sorry.
Thank you councillor. Finally, Strategic and Corporate Select Committee, report from the meeting held on Wednesday the seventeenth of September twenty twenty five. Councillor Robert.
Thank you Chair, move to the report.
Thank you very much for those reports. Takes us to agenda item thirteen, reports from other committees. First one is the Audit and Governance Committee, report from the meeting held on Thursday the twenty fourth of July twenty twenty five. Councillor Mackey.
Thank you very much, Jim, very happy to move the report, thank you.
Thank you councillor. There's Health and Wellbeing Board, report from the meeting held on Wednesday the third of September twenty twenty five. Councillor Huymark.
Thank you Chairman, I move the report, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Takes us to agenda item fourteen, reports about businesses, the business of joint arrangements and external organizations. First is the Norfolk Joint Museums Committee, report from the meeting held on Friday the twenty fifth of July twenty twenty five. Councillor Ward.
Thank you Chairman, I'm pleased to move the report.
Thank you. Norfolk Records Committee, report from the meeting held on Friday the twenty fifth of July twenty twenty five. Councillor Tinnery of Hosborough.
Move, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor. Takes agenda item fifteen which is notice of motion and five motions have been submitted to this meeting. Just remind councillors that proposers have five minutes each to speak to the motion and secanders and all other motions will have three minutes each. Councillor Morphy.
Thank you Chair, can I at this stage propose the extension of the meeting to long enough to hear motion three? I understand motion two is likely to be withdrawn, so I'm not quite sure how long that would be appropriate but I think we have had discussions about how we might run that, so whatever needs to be moved, I move it.
Right, yeah, we did discuss this earlier and I've just, a quick consultation, if you have a second or I would propose to that, what you're actually proposing is it runs to the end of the act which is thirty, so I believe thirty minutes or the end of that motion, whichever is the shorter, is that what you're proposing?
Yes indeed and I think we've, the understanding is that we will have one speaker per group plus a right reply.
Yep, that's fine, I'll get to that. Seconded by councillor Smith Clare, all those in favour of that extension? That's carried, thank you very much. So invite the proposer, the first motion to propose the motion and that's councillor James.
Thank you Chairman, I'm not as bouncy on this one I'm afraid people. So, as a fellow at the Institute of Certified Bookkeepers and having worked with many small and medium sized businesses over the last twenty four years, I know that they are crucial for economic growth and societal wellbeing. They are the backbone of our economy, driving innovation, creating jobs and contributing significantly to our gross domestic product. SMEs also play a vital role in supporting local communities and fostering a more diverse and competitive marketplace. Small businesses are often deeply rooted in their local communities, supporting local suppliers and contributing to the social fabric of that area. By increasing the VAT threshold, businesses would be willing to grow as they would have fewer administrative hoops to jump through. These businesses generally have fewer employees, so that time spent on VAT compliance takes up a large proportion of staff time, with many smaller businesses opting to do it themselves, which can be a massive task for a small business owner with frankly limited knowledge of VAT when, to be honest, let's face it, they should be focusing on the core element of their business, not the admin. When most businesses register for VAT, they're faced with a really profound choice. Either increase their prices by up to twenty percent or lose up to twenty percent to their existing prices as VAT. Those choices are be less competitive and likely see a drop in sales or read into the profits of the business and ultimately reduce the amount of money available to reinvest and expand. Neither of those options advocate for small business growth. Not having to register for VAT at such a low turnover means that small businesses providing goods and services to us, the consumers, can charge less overall, which should ultimately encourage the public to spend more, thus growing the economy. Research previously undertaken for HMRC themselves found that twenty percent of unregistered businesses trading close to that VAT threshold had taken action to remain below the VAT threshold. Of those businesses, almost half said that they'd closed their business down for part of the year just to avoid having to register for VAT and one in five said that they'd turned down work. However, as the motion notes, the VAT threshold is not the only barrier to economic growth. The Norfolk Chamber of Commerce have found that sixty six percent of Norfolk businesses identify tax and national insurance contributions as their top barrier to growth, with a third having already cut investment following that national insurance rise. Higher national insurance and business rates are restraining growth, disincentivizing investment and contributing to reduced confidence, with seventy four percent of firms intending to raise prices again. They're also stopping recruiting, which is not good for our economy or our residents. The bottom line is, you cannot tax your way to growth. Our Norfolk businesses, whether they are decorators in docking or plumbers in Potter Higham, need their county council to speak up for them and I urge you all to support the motion before you today. Thank you.
Thank you councillor and I understand councillor Bensley is seconding, do you wish to speak now or reserve your right to speak later?
Thank you Chair, I'd like to hold my right and reserve at the end, please Chair, thank you.
Right, thank you for that. So far councillor Price, councillor Price and councillor Eagle have indicated they wish to speak, councillor Price first, please.
Thank you Chair. I'm glad this council is discussing the very real pressures on Norfolk's businesses, especially our small and medium sized firms and our tourism sector, which are the backbone of our local economy. The call to raise the VAT threshold will certainly give many businesses some breathing space and I'm pleased to support that direction. But let's not lose sight of the bigger truth here, VAT itself is a regressive tax. It doesn't care whether you're a cleaner on minimum wage or a millionaire, you pay the same rate on the same purchase. That means that working people in Norfolk end up spending a far higher share of their income on VAT than the wealthiest households. In practice, this locks in inequality. For small businesses, the current VAT threshold is not just a nuisance, it's a real break on growth. Time and again, we hear of family firms deliberately holding back expansion for fear of tripping over the threshold, as the cabinet member pointed out. That is not just unfair on them, it holds back the whole UK economy. So yes, let's support this motion but let's also be honest that tinkering with VAT alone won't solve the problem. Governments of all stripes have relied on VAT hikes because it's easy to collect but it shifts the burden onto those least able to afford it. Meanwhile, large corporations, some making record profits, continue to avoid paying their fair share. If we want thriving small businesses, good jobs and strong public services, we need a tax system that is genuinely fair. That means taxing wealthy, taxing wealth properly, taxing large corporations properly and easing the pressure on working people and local businesses. This motion is a step in the right direction but the bigger picture is clear, we must build a tax system that asks those with the most to contribute the most so Norfolk and the rest of the country can flourish. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Eagle.
Thank you Chair, I shall cover some of the points that was good made because they've already been raised by councillor James and councillor Price. Just put some facts on, this year going around speaking to businesses, I found a rural medium sized retail area has now got to find an extra twenty eight thousand pound for the national insurance charges and the others. I spoke to a small newsagent in a market town and because of the way the thresholds have been changed, they have got to pay an extra two hundred pound a month. And it's not those big businesses, it's hitting those small businesses, they're actually employing people on a part time, and I'm not categorising but single parents, other people, even people with part time jobs and that's been, had the impact and I think it's been, it's damaging, it is damaging to our small businesses and getting on and the rest has already been said, so I'll stop now to allow us to move to the next one.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Mason-Billig.
Thank you Chairman. Since the October twenty twenty four budget, we've seen the reality of government tax decisions playing out here in Norfolk. These are not abstract measures from Whitehall, they're costing us jobs, businesses and opportunities. On Tuesday, there was an architect that went into voluntary liquidation, a firm that had survived Covid but couldn't survive the wave of tax increases introduced last autumn. Six employers are now redundant and their closures scrapped the redevelopment of the final piece of the Anglia Square regeneration, a project that would have brought new homes and shops. They're not alone, a family bakery in Kings Lynn has closed its tea room after seven years of trading citing rising costs. A Norwich restaurant losing vital business rate relief, cut from seventy five percent to forty percent, reached out to me. When I spoke to the city council, they would have loved to help but this is of course government policy. So for businesses already struggling with high energy and supplier bills, these extra burdens can be the breaking point and they cannot simply pass those costs on to customers because if they do, there will be no customers. So on top of that, increases in employer national insurance are squeezing firms further. For businesses with slim margins, this is not just another bill, it's a tax on jobs. We've seen the report from the Norfolk Chambers of Commerce, two thirds of local firms now see tax as a major concern, one in three has cut back on investment and nearly three quarters expect to raise prices in the months ahead. This is a vicious cycle, higher taxes driving higher prices, fueling inflation and choking off growth. We need urgent reform, that means raising the VAT threshold to a hundred thousand pounds to give small firms the breathing space to grow, it means reversing the rise in employer national insurance so we reward job creation instead of penalising it and it means restoring meaningful business rate relief so our high streets, cafes and shops, the lifeblood of Norfolk's communities can survive. The closures we've seen are not isolated, they are warning signs and if we don't act, we'll see more businesses shut, more people out of work and more regeneration schemes abandoned. Norfolk cannot afford that, we must support our businesses, we need them to succeed.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Borat.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I support this and I think it's really key to see how damaging, how far more damaging the national insurance, employer's national insurance rise has been than I think than the government even realised. The key issue here was the lowering of the threshold at which people pay it and this hit small businesses but crucially lower paid jobs for people who in already precarious employment. It made their roles disproportionately more expensive than better paid staff. So the decision here taxed lower paid people more than better paid people and made their jobs unviable and that is why we have seen a huge decrease in the number of people employed in hospitality and an increase in youth unemployment. These, it's so retrograde and the idea that anybody who runs a business is obviously hugely wealthy is not borne out by the facts. The people who run businesses are hardworking people and the sort of people who get off their bottom every day and make a life for themselves and their families. And you know, if they can employ people, that's fantastic and they're good for the communities in which they live and all these small businesses tend to be rooted in the places where the person who owns and runs them lives, so they are spread across the whole of the country. It's also led to inflation in the things that, again, poorer people need. So there's been huge food inflation as a result of this because farming businesses on the whole are small businesses and producing food is something that's done on very thin margins. So when you dump a whole load of extra tax into businesses already operating So when you dump a whole load of extra tax into businesses already operating on very thin margins, who on the whole are employing less well people to provide staples, what you do is you bump a whole load of inflation into the system. And that's one of the reasons, food inflation, the cost of food going up is one of the main drivers. So the impact of these decisions has absolutely targeted those poorer-paid people who live on the whole in rural areas, which is an area which I represent. And it is so appalling that I'm just not, I'm surprised there hasn't been more of an outcry on it. You know, I absolutely support this. The VAT threshold, again, is a disincentive to growth, so if you've got a business that's growing, that you want it to take on more people, employ more people, actually you cap it. So I'd much prefer much more gentle tapering, but anything that increases the opportunities for small businesses to thrive, I would support. And I think that is why this motion is really important. And I, you know, I hope it gets cross-party support because I think it is really important. This is something that's happening in our towns and villages right now.
You beat me to it, I was just about to say you're out of time, so well done. I've not seen any indication from anyone else. Councillor Dark.
Thank you, Chair. Just one extra point I'd make, although we are talking here around businesses closing and going to the wall, there are also those businesses that we are all aware of here that are actually taking decisions that as the tourist trade or footfall starts reducing towards the autumn, are looking at their young employees, their people that are actually on zero-hours contracts etc, and making decisions to close on certain days because it's now no longer economically viable for them to open. Now that means people like my son and his generation are finding it increasingly hard to find places where they can take employment, to step out and start experiencing the workplace. And there are other people that are actually expecting to do three days a week, being told that they can only do one day a week because the offices or the buildings are now shutting because it's not economically viable for them to open. So I thoroughly support this because it is having an impact, not only on those business owners, and I'm intrigued by what the definition of a business owner is that government is using, but also those people who they say that they're there to support, the frontline low-paid workers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Long.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. VAT for the small business is regressive taxation, and it's regressive taxation in a way that anyone that is approaching the threshold is going to, you know, not want to go over the threshold and therefore reduce the work that they do. And that is really bad, you know, a business that could really flourish, could take on more people and grow, but they deliberately keep below the threshold, which is an arbitrary figure. And actually, if this motion calls for an increase in the VAT threshold to £100,000, well, you don't need to be very sizeable in terms of company, you know, not many employees before £100,000 turnover is, you know, not really a very large figure. And to put no too fine a point on it, those local businesses that employ local people across Norfolk, they shop locally, they spend locally, they buy their equipment generally locally from local suppliers, and they're restricted in what they do because of the VAT threshold. If they are successful and want to buy a pickup truck to go out about in their business, they get further taxes on that because pickup trucks are now seen as terribly polluting, but eventually electric ones will be able to pull heavy trailers, we'll wait to see. And don't even get me started on plastic bags. When the plastic bag tax was introduced, it was a five p tax, and, you know, the last time I bought a plastic bag in a supermarket, it was about 50 p. Everything is being taxed more, and absolutely, the VAT threshold is not helping small business, and it's definitely not helping Norfolk's small business. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. I don't see anyone else wishing to speak, so that takes us to councillor Bensley to second the motion, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Before I just have my comments, can I just wish, and I think I speak on behalf of the council here, the women's rugby team for this Saturday in the final, hopefully they win against Canada. I think we were successful last time when we wished the English ladies' football team, and they brought it home, so, you know, I think everybody in the chamber will be wishing the same. Right, sorry. Norfolk's businesses are the heartbeat of our communities, from the high streets to our farms to our vital tourism sector. Their survival is critical to local jobs, the future prosperity of our fine county, and the evidence is clear that higher costs and rising insolvencies are squeezing growth, confidence and investment. This motion will send a strong message to the government that practical targeted relief on VAT thresholds, national insurance contributions and business rates would give our businesses the breathing space they need to invest, grow and protect jobs, and hopefully invest in green economy and the circular economy as well because the environment needs protecting in that half as well. But by supporting this motion, we're standing firmly with Norfolk's businesses and their communities as a whole at the time they need it most. So hopefully we will all support this motion, and I thank councillor Jameson for bringing it forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor James, do you wish to exercise your right of reply? Right, thank you very much. So we'll now go to the vote on that motion, please. I think the plus is for and the minus is against. We have, one councillor hasn't voted, if anyone wishes to indicate who that is or how they voted, but otherwise, in that case, it's 43 for, no abstentions and nine against. Thank you. That takes us on to motion two, and I invite councillor Watkins to propose the motion, although I understand you may wish to do something else.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As I've indicated earlier, we'll be withdrawing this motion, probably with a view to resubmitting it at the next appropriate council meeting. But in the meantime, perhaps on this particular issue, we hope for some good news from the Labour Party Conference. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So I invite the proposer of the third motion, councillor Morfu, to propose the motion. Before we start, we will run into extra time, and there was a suggestion that we should have, for this motion, one speaker per group to make sure each group gets a chance to speak. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Borat. Sorry, councillor Morfu.
Thank you, Chair. I am a proud, woke, lefty patriot. I like seeing our national flags flying to celebrate what makes me proud to be British. My father fought on the beaches of D-Day to Berlin. My mum built mosquitoes when she was old enough, having been evacuated from the London Blitz. It's a long time since I was a Boy Scout, but as a duty patrol leader, I learnt to fold and raise a Union flag the right way up, ensuring it didn't touch the ground. I was brought up to respect what our national symbols stand for and those who genuinely gave their all. I was proud to be the city council leader in the midst of a financial crisis, who found the money to revamp the City War Memorial so that our veterans could raise their banners on ceremonial occasions. The government is following the previous government's policy. The government website says, 'Flags are a very British way of expressing our joy and pride. They are emotive symbols which can boost local and national identities, strengthen community cohesion and mark civic pride.' The government wants to see more flags flown, particularly the Union flag, the flag of the United Kingdom. It is a symbol of national unity and pride, a sentiment with which I wholeheartedly agree, and I'll endorse councillor Bensley's sentiments about this weekend as well. But what happens when some of our residents can't celebrate those flags as symbols of unity and pride? What if there are some who choose to use what should be a symbol of unity and pride to bully, harass and intimidate, to sow division and provoke bad behaviour? I'm sure I share a love of the quintessential British roast beef dish and Yorkshire pudding with many in the chamber, and apologies to our non-meat eaters. However, if somebody shoved my favourite dish in my face and shouted at me I was being unpatriotic because I was choking on it, then maybe my attitude towards it might quickly change. Predictably, those who challenge loyalty to our nation and flag because they are criticised for sowing division and misusing symbols to intimidate reinforce those divisions at every opportunity. Many, if not most, of those expressing their views about current matters of genuine concern, small boats and hotels being the touchstones, are ordinary decent people with little interest in politics. To all of those, I send my respects. On all sides of politics, there are fringes that seek to breed discontent from genuine grievance for the sake of their wider aims. Encouraging neighbours to distrust each other by creating false dividing lines and shouting down those resisting being bullied until they retreat for a quiet life can create the vacuum to use to spread more division. I'm heartened and encouraged by the way many of our communities have responded. Coming together as a community to say no to bullying, harassment and intimidation is what we do. We are Norfolk, we are proud of our tolerance, inclusiveness and unity. Now there are calls from that community, not to prevent flags being flown, but to prevent symbols of unity and pride being used to do the opposite to celebrating and giving us pride. Nobody should feel intimidated by the flying of our national flag, absolutely, I couldn't agree more. And if circumstances have been created where some are feeling threatened, they have a right not to feel intimidated so they too can express their pride and celebrate our community, our country and our county. This motion addresses behaviours, not flags. How we encourage behaviour that brings us together dials down the passion that blurs the issues we know are hard enough to deal with already, and seeks to restore the use of flags and symbols to their proper place, celebration, pride in community, county and country. Flying flags is great. The behaviours of some who use our proud flags and symbols to justify bad behaviour is where the line should be drawn. It's behaviour, not flags, I take issue with. We should all be proud of the stand we take against bad behaviour that divides us, as we are proud of the flags we use to celebrate the things we have in common. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And councillor Shibley Sexton, I understand you are going to second. Do you wish to speak now or do you wish to reserve your right to speak at the end?
I wish to reserve my right to speak, please. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. I understand there is an amendment proposed by councillor Mason-Billig.
Thank you, Chairman. I think how we view the reasons for flag raising is a very subjective one, and we should not be sweeping judgements on people who do that, especially we in this chamber who are public representatives. It's essential that we as a council are seen to be level-headed, fair, reasonable and act within the law. This amendment is intended to temper the language used on this sensitive topic, it's to bring the motion in line with current council policy, and it's to reaffirm our position on choosing unity over division in our county, and that's all I want to say.
Councillor Morfu, do you wish to accept that?
Yes, Chair, I think the wording we can accept, and certainly if it brings us together, then we'd be very happy to accept it.
Right, thank you. So that amended motion now becomes a substantive motion, and that's what the debate will be on. Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak? I said we would take it from, does anyone from the Liberal Democrat Group wish to speak? We're now one minute away from going in, from running out of three hours and going into the extra time, so this will be conducted, the additional part of the debate through the additional time that was agreed. Councillor Borat.
Thank you, Chair. We'll be supporting this motion. I think this council is always strongest when it comes together in unity, and it's done so in the past on its recent motions on Holocaust Remembrance Day, and in the past when we had motions on Black Lives Matter. I fully stand behind what councillor Morfu says, that the issue here is behaviour and not flags, and we need to be focusing on behaviour. Because whilst there are people who protest for all sorts of reasons, and I protested about things many times myself, what is not acceptable is that there are among some who are protesting at the moment, there is a motivation to make Norfolk and parts of Norfolk appear to be a hostile place for some people within our community. No parts of our county should be a hostile environment for anybody, and I think as a council, we should stand full square against that type of behaviour. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Does anyone from the independent group wish to speak to this motion? Councillor Ring.
Thank you, Chair. This motion could not be clearer, there is no room for abuse and no room for hate in our country, or indeed in our county, or indeed our country, not now, not ever. I speak as a second-generation Englishman. My mother came here from Germany after the war, and Norfolk gave her safety, dignity and future. That is what this country does at its best, it welcomes, it offers hope, it builds communities where people can belong. I am proud to be British, I am proud to be English, I love our flag and I love what it should stand for. But let's be honest, when it's hijacked as a banner for abuse, when it is twisted into a weapon of division, it doesn't strengthen our identity, it poisons it. That is not patriotism, that is prejudice. We are elected to lead, not to look the other way. Every time we allow hate to creep into our county unchecked, every time we shrug our shoulders at abuse, we chip away at the values we claim to defend. Norfolk is better than that, we are a people who are better than that, and today we must say loudly and clearly that our council is better than that too. In Germany, between the 9th and the 10th of November in 1938, an event now known as Kristallnacht saw the culmination of nationalism advocated by the Nazis. We have to look very seriously at how close we are getting in this country to a similar event happening. Colleagues, this motion is not about party lines, it's about drawing a line, a line that says abuse and hate, stop here. And a quote, as Nelson Mandela once said, 'No one is born hating another person. People learn to hate, and if they can learn to hate, they can be taught to love.' Let's lead by example and teach that very sentiment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. To the independent progressive group, please. Councillor Webb.
Thank you, Chair. As has been said, on their own, flags can be symbols of pride or belonging, but the targeted locations and what has accompanied the recent flag flying is what is the problem, threats, intimidation and racist abuse. Intimidation is not patriotism, and our nation's flag is demeaned when it's used by a handful of individuals to spread fear and division. No one should feel unsafe in their own neighbourhood, no one should be told explicitly or implicitly that they don't belong in their home city, threatening a racist behaviour, cause real harm to people's lives. When flags were attached to a specific lamppost in my division recently, there was footage on social media that showed the perpetrators using racist language and shouting chants, so there was no doubt of their intention to victimise and harass users in that particular case of the Norwich mosque, and to stoke community tensions. And it's that that we need to be, seem to be, not accepting. I did ask the leader earlier if she believes that abuse, harassment, bullying and hate speech have no place in our council, our community or our county, and she did readily agree with me, and I think it's a shame that that line has been scrubbed out of our own agree with me. And I think it's a shame that that line has been scrubbed out of our original motion because, in your remembrance, because it's, we shouldn't be afraid to say that. But I absolutely support the motion and will support the amended motion too. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Does anyone from Reform UK wish to speak? Councillor Kirk.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, fully support this amendment. It's, let's all come together under the Union flag. Discrimination, it's a horrible world when it gets to this stage. I mean, it's coming from all sides of the argument at the moment. I mean, I myself am receiving quite nice remarks about my side of the argument, as with people on the other side of the argument do. So yeah, fully support this. No place in Great Britain for it, never has been, never will be. Let's move on. Let's all live together happily and ignore those who are the minority that are only there to cause division within our communities. So fully support it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Shibley Sexton, you've reserved your right, if you wish to speak now, please.
Thank you. So I'm mixed race. My father was born in Norfolk. My mother was born in Nazareth and I was born in Jerusalem. When I was a baby, my father and myself nearly died on the same day. My father narrowly survived a bombing and I was across the city and was nearly shot. At this point, my parents decided to move to England for my safety. It is with this background, I say, that I strongly believe from the core of my being that every person deserves to live with dignity and respect and have the opportunity for flourishing and go to sleep safely in their beds. I am proud to be Palestinian. I'm also proud to live in Norwich. I'm proud to be a councillor of Norwich. I'm proud to live in Norfolk, a city shaped by its history of welcoming people in need, from the stranger's hall to stranger's coffee. I am most importantly proud of the amazing people and communities I have met across England and the diversity and multitudes this country contains. We are a country based on multiculturalism. The most bitritish things, from roast potatoes come from Peru, to tea which comes from China and India, to our language which is Latin, Germanic, French and Danish in their root, to our patron saint who is Palestinian Turkish. We are a multicultural country. Our culture is inherently and deeply multicultural. At times of increasing polarisation, increasing tension, it is, we must come together and have unity. We must be able to have community. We must stand together against hate and have compassion and community and choose humanity and solidarity. This motion has been powerful in bringing people from across parties together to collaborate. And a special thanks to Maxine from the Progressive Independence for all her hard work. Because we are united on the belief we cannot let hate win, that people deserve to live in safety and free from harassment. We as a council should be an emblem of toleration, leading the way in standing against hate, condemning racism and not allowing symbols that we should be proud of, and I know that everyone in this room are proud of, to be hijacked in a way that is antithetical to the very core of what it is to be British, which is a community that is global. We have nothing in this country that stays at the borders of this island. At one point, the sun didn't set on the British Empire. We are a culture that is deeply based in our global context and to pretend otherwise is just not true. I hope and I wish to see a world where everyone can go to bed safely and everyone is free. But until we get to that point, we need to be giving people that chance for sanctuary. And therefore, I really hope everyone votes for this motion because it's very important that here and now, we are saying to Norfolk that as a county, we wish to be a community, we wish to support each other. If 97% of the people who live in Norfolk work in Norfolk, we are a very isolated and like self-contained county.
Councillor, you're out of time. Could you start?
But that means we are all a community and I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Councillor Morfu, do you wish to exercise your right to reply?
Very briefly, Chair. Just thank everybody for their contributions. I think it was a short but powerful debate and worth having and very delighted that we've been able to come together in the way that this debate is done. And we will be able to show by example how we get together to tackle even most difficult problems unified for Norfolk.
Thank you. As contributions, could I ask IT to put the voting in place? Thank you very much. Thank you councillors. I think everyone's the chance to vote. So that is 54, no abstentions, no one against. So that is unanimous. Thank you. I remind, we're now in, three hours has elapsed, we're now into the extra time. So we've just finished the extra time that was agreed, which was that it would be to the end of that debate and vote. So we're now into closure time. So any existing amendment, any motions will not be debated, but there will be a recorded vote if they are proposed and seconded. Could I ask, motion four, councillor Maxine Webb, do you wish to propose that or do you wish to withdraw it? So motion four is withdrawn. Motion five, it's a Labour group motion. Councillor Morfu, do you wish to?
Thank you very much. Which takes us on to item 16, questions under rule 9.3 of the council procedural rules. Two questions been received from councillor Maxine Webb and from councillor Steve Morfu. Written responses from the cabinet member for communities and partnerships and the cabinet member for finance have been circulated to members and published on the Norfolk County Council website. Those responses will also be appended to the minutes of this meeting. Agenda item 17, appointments to committees, subcommittees and joint committees, and there are no appointments for this council to note. So that brings us to the end of the meeting. Thank you everyone for attending today and for everyone's participation. Thank you.